At the entrance, main entrance, 20 requires complementary materials in the landscape and hardscape that have been used through the entire master plan. Twenty-one deals with the future interparcial access to the west, to the post office property. Twenty-two requiring no parking signs since the streets are less than 24 foot wide. The developer, when the Midwick development was developed, the developer of that site moved the overhead power lines from the north side of Thompson Street to the south side. So the Providence group now has to manage the power lines that have been relocated. So the developer has agreed to underground those existing overhead utilities along Thompson Street. And then the last condition, 24, no more than 10% of the units be rented. And that concludes the staff report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Woodman? Did a great job. Nobody's got any questions? Would the applicant like to come forward?
Get so confused. Mayor Gillen, members of the council, Kathy Zickert with Smith, Kimbrel and Russell. And it's an absolute pleasure to be here and to see you and Kathy and Michael and Eric and everybody else. For a while I was wondering if we were ever going to get back to this, so it's a real pleasure. And my last real large social event was with some of you at the ABC awards dinner. And so I thought it was appropriate that coming back to Alpharetta should be my first public hearing. And I really couldn't be happier to be here. We are delighted with the staff recommendation except for one minor change, which I think they are agreeable with. And that is paragraph nine with regard to the architecture being brick. I call that the Councilman Mitchell condition. We would like to add some language that says gables, dormers, cantilevers and other architectural elements that cannot support brick material may be cementous siding. And I actually have a copy of that language for you if it would be easier for you in reviewing the conditions. Do you want me to bring it to you or?
Sure.
Okay. A couple of things I want to emphasize. Warren did have several meetings with the neighborhood and did, as Michael indicated, incorporate as a consequence a number of changes to the plan. There were also meetings with some of you and staff, and we also incorporated those changes into the plan. We started out with 54 units and it was made abundantly clear that that was not going to be a satisfactory number. So we were happy to reduce that and come up with a more appropriate density in the eyes of staff. A couple of other things that I would like to remark upon is that we have more parking in terms of guest parking in this project than any other project that's been approved in downtown Alpharetta during the past three years. The 54 lot plan, which we could convert to a 48 lot plan, had an additional 15 guest parking spaces on site. I understand that there has been some.
They can't hear you.
I understand there's been some concern for guest parking on site. And I do want to emphasize that we are in excess of what is required in the driveways. And additionally, that we then will have the on-street parking. Someone asked about whether we could get permission from Wellstar to do some overflow parking in their lot. And at this point in time, we cannot. Their concern is that if it's for guest parking, there's no way they can tell if it's a guest at the complex or whether it is somebody who's just using their lot and not paying for public parking fees. So unless we can come up with a way to fix that, which we're willing to discuss with them, at this point in time, I can't see how that arrangement could work. I suspect it's a practical matter nonetheless. If there's an event at night, people are going to park in the Wellstar lot unless it is somehow policed or gated. So I think we have enough on-site and on-street. But in any event, we will endeavor to continue in those discussions. But I can't promise he's standing here tonight that we'll be able to get anywhere with that. I do want to emphasize that the total unit size in here ranges from 2,100 to 2,700 square feet in size. Even the smaller width units can go from 2,100 to 2,400 in size, depending upon whether someone wants to finish off what is basically an exterior deck and convert it to interior living space or an interior climate controlled porch, that kind of thing. And other than that, we were happy with what was said by Michael and we hope you will support the application. If I can ask any or answer any questions from you, I would be happy to do so.
Do we have any questions for the applicant? Councilman Hypes.
Ms. Zickert, nice to see you again.
You too.
What are the dimensions of the garages for the 24 and 20 foot width?
They're the standard garage widths that relate to the driveway widths. And I can't tell you off the top of the head what those are in Alpharetta, perhaps Warren can.
And related to that, do we have elevations showing the rear of the 20 foot wide?
No, we got that word this afternoon that that was an interest. And there was just no way to scramble enough to be able to get something for you this evening.
If the, how would you measure 20 foot wide? Exterior to exterior to its widest right exterior to left exterior?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor, members of council, one jolly Providence group.
See.
The 20 feet, you know, I've got a 20 foot townhome that we built. We've not designed these plans because we're asked to, just about everything we end up doing in Alpharetta, we end up designing new plans for. But a typical garage is 20 feet from the outside till you end up with about 19 eight inside. And then you have 20 feet depth. So, you know, so when you park the bay is 19 feet, we have an extra foot in depth. So we measure from the inside of the wall to the inside of the garage door.
Yeah, so that would be the.
Length.
Well, going back to the width of a 20 foot wide unit, the narrow ones.
Right.
Is that measured from the left exterior wall to the right exterior wall?
That's correct.
Yeah. And so to put the garage doors in there, there'd be a little bit of an inset to get the rollers on there, et cetera, right?
That's correct.
So I'm trying to figure out, you know, parking is an issue with me. How wide is the, is getting the cars into the garage, I guess is what I'm trying to get to. Because I didn't get the elevations and that's why I was wondering.
Well, just about every house you have in Alpharetta has a 16 foot garage door.
Okay.
So if you're trying to make the garage door 18 feet, you'd have nobody in compliance with code.
I'm not trying to make anything, I'm just asking questions.
So the garage door is 16 feet. And so you end up like about 16 two because you put the jam on. And then you end up with 19, you know, nine in width. And the parking space is nine feet wide. So you've got 18 feet, you've got one and a half feet extra over code for the width.
So trying to take what you just told me, the width of the garage itself once inside is how wide?
About 19 six inside the inside.
Wide.
Wide.
And about 20 deep?
20 deep. And so it's about a foot longer than code in the depth portion and it's about a foot and a half wider in the width.
And that's, that's what's planned or that's what's committed to or?
That's pretty much what we would build in a 20 foot wide townhome to a 24 foot wide townhome. That's what the garage would be.
Okay, to, you know, either a 20 or a 24.
Either one, yeah, they both end up that way.
Can we get, can we get that as a condition that there'll be no less than those dimensions?
Which dimensions?
The ones you, you're the one telling me what you plan on building, I'm asking you.
Yeah, I mean, so, I mean, I've got the floor plans right here. I mean, I, you know, I think it kind of put me on the spot on the code.
I'm not asking a code question, Mr. John.
We're going to meet code. And, and I think it's up to the staff to meet, that we meet code. And we will meet the code with a parking space in the garage.
Okay.
So I would, I mean, the width is a little bit more issue than the depth, and so I will tell you, they're all going to be, you know, 20 feet deep from the back of the garage wall to the garage door.
Okay.
The width is a little bit variable. It may be maybe 19 six and a half. Now, I don't want to tear down a unit because it's a half unit inch too big or too small.
Well, I don't want that either, but I'll...
So the code requires 18 feet will be, I would say, over 19 feet. I would tell you, that would be at least a code, a foot wider in the width and a foot longer in the length, either way than code.
All right. And if that's what you are going to build, I just wanted to know if we could make that...
That gives you a little variable if I'm not exactly to the inches at 19 six in the width.
Okay. Okay. I think that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Any other questions from council for the applicant? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good questions.
Ms. Cobb, do we have any public comment cards on this item?
I have one public comment card.
And if there's anyone else here who would like to come forward and speak on this item, you can still do that after this gentleman. Just come forward. You'll have three minutes, and please give your name and address.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Sanford Sideman. I live in Academy Park, which backs up to Thompson Street. The primary reason I'm speaking tonight, and I spoke on June 4th, is Thompson Street has become a safety issue. I'm an average runner. I run up and down Thompson Street quite regularly. It's not safe. Cars will come off West Side Parkway, come flying down the hill, till all of a sudden they see what's down there, then they start slowing down. I believe it's going to be a matter of time, unfortunately, not if, but when somebody gets hurt there. People cross over from the Alpharetta Loop to the other side where there's a sidewalk to walk up to Avalon. Traffic, we are, in my observation, Thompson Street is trying to put 15 pounds in a three-pound bag. It's a safety issue. A number of people spoke on June 4th on the safety issue. The townhomes they want to build sound real nice. I'm not speaking to that, but the safety issues for Thompson Street need to be addressed. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Was there anyone else that did want to come forward at this time? Seeing none, we'll close public comment.
Can I respond to that comment?
Please feel free.
While the gentleman was speaking, I took the liberty of writing out a condition that I think will satisfy you, and that is that garages shall be a minimum of 20 feet deep and 19 feet wide. Additionally, there has been discussion about whether we could do some traffic calming affiliated with this project. Those are some things we're certainly willing to consider. We've discussed with staff a raised sidewalk, a crosswalk, if you will, that could go on Thompson to slow the speed of those drivers who are turning onto it. So if that is a true concern and something you want to add, I think we would probably be amenable, and I think there may be a draft of a condition to that effect.
Councilman Hypes.
Ms. Zickert, the location of the park adjacent to the entrance, the entrance more or less, on Thompson Street, more or less lines up with the park entrance and walkway to the Loop for Midwick. Has there been any thought of moving the park to where the entrance is and moving the entrance further east, kind of flipping that, which would A, create more room between the Midwick entrance exit with this one, and also create more of a park all the way through? And if you're ever talking about crossing the street, you have some idea where people may be crossing there. I'm not trying to design your project. I'm just asking if any consideration had been given to that.
Yes, quite a bit, and there's been a lot of discussions about it, and it would have ended up chopping up units and, we believe, creating a problem in terms of where we end up with the units being located. So we met with Eric Graves and discussed exactly where he thought we should put this particular entrance, and this was it. As I said, we also have had discussions about traffic calming, if that's something that interests you.
And just so, in case I didn't communicate it, I'm not talking about moving any units, just flipping the park where the entrance is and the entrance where the park is.
Yeah, the problem with this entrance and where we're located is that if we move it west, and say there was a question about lining up at one point.
Yeah, I'm talking about that.
If you line it up, we'll be hauling off thousands of tripped up, because it did this to the grade. There's about, if we move it to the east...
Yes, sir.
And you move it on the other side of the park and flip it, then we're at a lower point. We've got to come in at the grade of the elevation of the road there, and then we're at the bottom of our property, and then under this park is underground detention. So we would have no way to put detention if we moved it down. Where we have it now, we can get detention below it and still let it drain. So it's really at the point between a low point and a high point.
So not only has it been thought about, it's been given a lot of thought.
And John Murder with Travis Pruitt, our engineers here, if you want to ask him...
No, no, that's fine. I just...
Yes, we looked at it, and like I said, we worked very hard with the neighbors trying to figure out the best place to put it. If we could move it further away, it would be great, but then we couldn't do detention underground. And what is nice about that park is that it is quite expensive to do underground detention, but it'd be a nice amenity with those parks kind of right there, right on the main street.
Councilman Binder.
Thank you, sir. With the traffic calming, I do think that'd be great to help out with it. I'm going to put my statement in a form of question, so I'm okay. But I know we've, you mentioned the raised sidewalks.
The raised crosswalks.
Raised crosswalks. I would just hope that we work with all staff. I can't remember who brought it up, but I thought the raised sidewalks with the public safety vehicles, the fire trucks, that we were going away from it at some point, but y'all can work that out as a staff. So when we're doing traffic calming, that it's kind of in line with, I think, was Roswell Street, so, or something there. So just trying to make sure we don't recreate issues that we've seen.
Councilwoman Richard.
Ms. Zickert, can you repeat the garage condition?
Yes. What I drafted was garages shall be a minimum of 20 feet deep and 19 feet wide.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions from council for the applicant?
Thank you.
I'll go ahead and call for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, offer a motion to approve MP-20-01/V-20-05, the Providence Group at Notting Hill and Old Milton Holdings. I will offer a change to condition number seven, so one through six, read as Mr. Woodman had read earlier. Condition number seven, I am changing to 30-foot linear green along Thompson Street shall include decorative stone brick or granite wall with an underlatch lighting or columns with hedge between the linear green and townhomes. Linear green shall include landscape, hardscape, and seating as approved by staff. Period. Area shall not be fenced. Period. Condition number nine, I will offer to add as the last sentence in that condition, gables, dormers, cantilevers, and other architectural elements that cannot support brick material may be cementous, I think is how it's pronounced, siding, may be cementous siding. And condition number, I'll add condition number 25 in regards to the crosswalk intersection that we were just discussing. If staff determines that there is a need for raised crosswalks/intersection across Thompson Street for traffic calming purposes, developer will work with staff to complete construction work and will receive impact fee credits for any installed crosswalks/intersection or similar road improvements that are for public use. And then last condition would be condition number 26, addressing garages, garages shall be a minimum of 20 feet in depth and 19 feet wide.
Second. We have a motion by Councilwoman Richard and a second by Councilman Binder. Everyone comfortable with the changes? They understand the changes that have been made to the motion? Any discussion at this time? Councilwoman Richard.
I just would like to commend the applicant. I know that in our February CZIM meeting, it was standing room only around Mr. Jolly's application. There were great numbers of folks from the Midwick and Foundry and other developments regarding the proposed application, and subsequent to that, I think he held two separate community meetings with the residents that were expressing some concerns and obviously came back with a much revised site plan. So I thank you for listening to the folks in the area, the residents there. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and call for a vote on the motion to approve MP-20-01/V-20-05, the Providence Group, Notting Hill, with the conditions recommended by staff as amended by Councilwoman Richard, including the two additional conditions on the crosswalk and the garage size. All those in favor of the motion to approve, please vote yes. Otherwise, vote accordingly, and it does pass unanimously. Next item up on the agenda is second item, item B, and that is PH-20-06, Nathan Circle, 380 Milton Avenue. Change previous conditions of zoning.
Thank you again, Mayor and council. Republican. The next item before you is a change to previous conditions of zoning related to residential lots in the downtown. The requested changes would reduce the front setback, allow access from Milton Ave, and increase the max home size. Have the aerial up on the overhead. The subject property is located at 380 Milton Avenue. That would be the southwest corner of Milton Avenue and Nathan Circle. This, you may remember, this property was rezoned back in 2015. It was rezoned from R15, 15,000 minimum square foot lot, and to R12, which would be a 12,000 square foot lot. And the reason for the rezoning was to subdivide this once .65 acre property into two lots. The home, this is, the home at the corner represents Lot One, with a Lot Two being the western lot. Both properties are part of the QA Wills subdivision, which is also known as Nathan Circle. Surrounding properties are all zoned R15, and specifically, the applicant is requesting the following changes. Increase the max home size from 2,600 square feet to 3,300 square feet, to reduce the front setback from 50 feet to 35 feet. And again, they're asking to allow access to this parcel from Milton Avenue. Before the property was subdivided, it was one lot. The property was legal nonconforming with respect to having two curb cuts. So the, there was a curb cut on Nathan Circle as well as Milton Avenue, which is why in 2015, staff did recommend and council ultimately approved the condition restricting access. So the access was meant to be for both lots from Nathan Circle, so there would be an access easement across Lot One, providing rear access to Lot Two. Of course, we have many established neighborhoods throughout the downtown, and we've seen homes in those neighborhoods torn down and replaced with much larger homes that sometimes are out of character with those neighborhoods, which is why we placed many of these conditions on this property back in 2015. At that time in 15, we, with regard to the maximum home size, we were just looking at the Nathan Circle subdivision or QA Wills, and we found that the average home size in that subdivision was about 2,600 square feet. With this current proposal, we acknowledge that this particular lot and this subdivision is different than the rest of the lots because it does have frontage on Milton Avenue. So we also, in considering the max home size that would be appropriate here, we also looked at homes along Milton Avenue, and specifically, there are three homes that were just recently built, north and east of this property. And those homes have a home size that ranges from 2,852 square feet to 3,827 square feet. So that applicant's request of 3,300 square feet is within that range. Those homes on Milton Avenue also have a front setback of 35 feet. The Lot Two currently, as I mentioned, currently does have a curb cut from Milton Avenue, but we did condition that it be removed with that 2015 rezoning, and that was because it was contrary to the city's vision for a walkable downtown, so limiting those curb cuts. In fact, the UDC requires a minimum 300 foot of separation between curb cuts and intersections. And if this Lot Two were to keep that curb cut, the distance from Nathan Circle is about 185 feet, and then the distance to the curb cut to the west would be 100 feet. You'll notice that these lots have curb cuts that are going to be less than that 300 feet, and that's because the code allows for every lot to have access to a public right-of-way. This is the applicant's proposed site plan. As you'll notice, you have Lot One and Lot Two. The applicant specifically is really looking at Lot Two with respect to allowing that access from that existing curb cut on Milton Avenue. The site plan does show the conditioned shared driveway across Lot One's rear yard that would provide access here. We also do have a subdivision plat where this property was subdivided from one parcel to two. However, that subdivision plat does call out the shared driveway and the access easement here, but I will be making a recommendation to change one additional condition as a result of that, because it does, the plat does indicate a proposed easement. So I'll discuss that language here shortly. The applicant provided elevations of the home for Lot Two. Of course, there was a primary elevation and four alternative elevations. The elevations were reviewed by the downtown consultant. The downtown consultant identified the architecture of the primary elevation as Greek revival, and he did indicate that this would comply with the downtown code. However, the four alternatives would not. This item was shown at the May 13th Community Zoning Information Meeting, which was a Zoom meeting. There were some public comments, mainly questions about the lot and home sizes of the three homes that we compared this to on the northeast, northeast of this property on Milton Avenue. And then there was also a question of whether or not, and this was a question for the applicant, whether or not additional land would be added to Lot Two. The answer from the applicant was that there would not be any additional land added to Lot Two. And then, of course, I mentioned the home sizes of the three homes on Milton Avenue. Their lot sizes are about a half acre. These two lots are closer to a quarter acre, just for clarification. Staff has reviewed the applicant's proposal and finds that it can generally support the change to the front setback and the max home size. However, the request to allow a curb cut on Milton Avenue was not... However, the request to allow a curb cut on Milton Avenue was not supported by staff. With that, staff is recommending approval subject to the following changes to the previous conditions of zoning. And you'll notice in the staff report, I highlighted the specific, I included all the changes from the 2015 rezoning, but I only highlighted the staff recommended changes in red text. So no change to condition number one. Condition number two, at the end, adding to the end of the sentence. Sentence reads, "Site plan shall be developed substantially as depicted on site plan dated September 21st, 2015." And staff recommends adding, "Except Lot 2 shall be developed substantially as depicted on the submitted site plan and in compliance with the conditions below." Three, applicant shall follow all the design elements of the Alpharetta Downtown Code. And then staff recommending the addition of a second sentence to three that reads, "Lot 2 home shall be substantially similar to the Delphi Cottage that's labeled on the applicant's elevation, or meet an architectural style in the downtown code with final approval by DRB. We are recommending that even residential in the downtown go to the Design Review Board." Condition Form 4 would change the maximum size of the home from 2,600 to 3,300 square feet. Change to Condition 5 would be the front setback changing from 50 feet to 35 feet. And then we are recommending a change to the next condition, Condition Number 6. Condition 6 in the 15 condition reads, "Both lots shall have access from a shared driveway off Nathan Circle." And in consultation, it was, this item was brought up to me by council, and I discussed with the city attorney, and the city attorney did recommend that we add a condition to, add a sentence to Condition 6, and that would read, "Corner lot, Lot 1," and that addresses 14 Nathan Circle, "shall grant a permanent access easement to Lot 2, which is 380 Milton Avenue over the shared driveway." And that ends the presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Does council have any questions for Mr. Woodman? Once again, very well done. Obviously, no questions. Thanks, sir. Would the applicant like to come forward at this time?
You want me to use the microphone?
Sure.
Since I'm really tall and I'm not supposed to touch that. I'm Rob Forrest, 12611 Itascoak, Milton. And like my, the previous people said, it's really great to be here in person and not on a computer for a change, in a lot of, a lot of different situations. This, this property, I bought it and closed on it, I guess this month would be five years ago, so I've owned it a long time. And it was one of those, I just was driving by it and I saw it and, and decided to buy it. I sold previously, maybe four and a half years ago, I sold the, I subdivided, then I sold the one lot off to a guy that's here today, Simon Richardson, who is an old neighbor from my old neighborhood from seven years ago. It was kind of a long-term investment. He always wanted to get into real estate, and, you know, I, it's probably the smallest piece of real estate I've ever done, you know, besides my own house. What I've pulled up today, they did a great job on, on the presentation. And where, why I'm here presenting this is I've, you know, I've been a fan of Lou Oliver's work for a long time. I've owned this lot and mowed it and paid taxes on it for five years. And, you know, it's time, you know, people have had some visions since in the last five years to, to take some of the houses and renovate them. Other houses have been torn down and build new ones. And it's just time for me to kind of move on and, and build a, you know, this is basically a Lou Oliver designed spec home. You know, not waiting for somebody to look at a Vamji field and, and try to figure out what to put on it. So I'm looking to build a house there, and I think I've had a lot of interest over the years, but it's one of those things, just, you know, build, build a house and they will come a little bit, kind of like the ones down the street and, and other ones. The thing I've pulled up here is what the area looked like. This is 2012, because the 15 one is just as, just as they were getting, you know, getting some things done. But as you can see, the neighborhood at the end of Wills wasn't in yet, and you can kind of, kind of see the overlay. These lot, lot lines, I can't change those. Those are the current lot lines as recorded. But if I kind of go across to like 2000, let's see, I have to go to 2017, I think, for it to stay. So you can see now that there's a neighborhood here, and if I scroll down the street, you still see these houses over here and the old Milton High School Field. And then if I go a couple more years, you can see, again, these houses over here, there's been a pool added on this lot. And then these three down here, 273 through 299, which are right down the street from us, have been torn down and built. And if I, also if I scroll, whoopsies, sorry, guys, trying to do this all at once. This house, it's right here, is a really, is a really cool, older house. It was completely renovated. There's also a couple more that are over here that were completely renovated. You know, just some people are going in and tearing down and building new houses. This one over here, for example, is a new house also, whereas this one over here has been renovated. So kind of a, kind of a mix, you know, kind of a mixed bag. In 2015, you know, the, the conditions of having a shared driveway, you know, I could, I could see that potentially with assemblages of this land on, you know, the north side or even on this side, and the north side even makes more sense, that that could be a potential, much like what the previous applicant's doing over on Thompson Street. You know, higher potential, higher density, things like that, and shared driveways and shared alleyways and stuff like that. But as we can see from the, from what's happened over the five years, a lot has changed, and most people, pretty much everybody's going in and renovating and or building new on the properties. And then other than that, the, yeah, we're good, I'm good with all the conditions, the only one being the shared driveway access. It's more, you know, more for the, for Simon's lot than mine, as, you know, because it impacts his lot and his ability to either build on it or sell it. One thing I will mention, so we're talking about adding driveways, two things. This one, as, as staff mentioned, there's already a curb cut that's been there. This whole section, everything from Wills down, downtown on this side was, there was a sidewalk project that was, the city just did, replacing a lot of the sidewalk and repairing sections, including repairing my curb cut. So they had the opportunity to go through there if they really wanted to get rid of something and make it a sidewalk, and they didn't. They actually repaired the driveway, you know, that doesn't, that goes into a yard as part of that. Two other things, if you look at 299 down here, if I go, you know, this is the, this is one of those three houses that's been renovated. If I go to two years ago, you can, you can, you know, each one has one driveway. And if I go to 2019, there's been an additional curb cut granted for this house. So this house has two curb cuts, and obviously extremely close together and whatnot. And then right down here, this, this lot here, this is, while it's not in downtown technically, it's, it's all attached here. This lot is, is smaller and it just got a curb cut. Also, that's been cleared now. I may have some pictures of it somewhere, but they got a curb cut versus maybe having to share with 521, so. Other than that, I'll reserve my time for questions and rebuttals and whatnot.
Any questions for the applicant? Councilman Higgs.
Mr. Forrest, I'm not clear on the timeline. You, you bought the property in when?
June 15.
And either before or after you bought the property, the condition had been placed for the shared driveway?
I, I bought the property, then I zoned it.
Okay. And then the condition for the shared driveway was placed on it?
Afterwards, that's correct.
And when did Mr. Simon buy the property?
Later that same year. So about four and a half years ago, I'm guessing, something like that. November.
Okay. And was a condition in place when he bought it?
Yes.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thanks, sir. Ms. Cobb, do we have any public comment cards on this item?
I do. I have two public comment cards.
Okay.
Simon Richardson, 1535 Squirrel Run.
Thank you. Simon Richardson, Squirrel Run. So just a correction to Rob. When we, I bought the lot, that was prior to be zoned, rezoned. So I think I bought it in like two months before it was rezoned. So it wasn't the condition previously. So just, I'm obviously here in support of changing the conditions. I bought the house five years ago. I looked at building on it and attempted to sell it a couple of times, and each time, the, the fact that the rear of the house is effectively completely consumed with the, with the fact that there's a shared driveway. And I think there was a good picture from staff that showed pretty much the whole of the entire back of the property would be consumed with that shared driveway. The other thing is, as Mr. Forrest mentioned, I think there were concerns with density, high density, maybe row houses, maybe things, but it is essentially single family homes with a single lot with a single curb cut, and that's exactly what I'm requesting and giving me the ability to use that extra space at the back of the lot. I have some examples of that, of the neighborhood. I walk down the Parkway quite a, walk down Milton quite often, and there are very, I don't know if I can show some of these on the screen.
Generally, only the applicant gets to do this. Yeah. My apologies.
Okay.
You got three minutes. That's fine, and if you want to ask them to hand it out to us, that's fine as well.
Yeah, so what it is showing is that most of the properties really have about a 10, 15 foot between each of the curb cuts. The, it also shows on the new properties that are being built, the additional curb cut that they were approved, and one of those is about 20 feet away apart. And then there's a good example of the distance between the curb cut on the 380 property. It is 180 feet away. Although not meeting the restrictions, it is extensively further away than every other lot on that driveway. Some of them even look dangerous. They're about 20 feet away. You can't even see the curb cut from where the, where the road is. It's, well, because it's around the corner. So that was my feedback. I appreciate you listening and taking consideration of that.
Thanks, sir. Ms. Cobb, who was the other person who requested a comment?
James Rusty Cartmill, 390 Milton Avenue.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Rusty Cartmill. I live at 390 Milton Avenue, the lot directly beside the lot that's in question tonight. It's one of the two lots that border it, so I would be one, one of the most affected by this move. I spoke nearly five years ago against dividing the lot at Milton Avenue and Nathan Circle into because of concerns that instead of one big house being built there, you could have two big houses built on about a two-thirds of an acre lot size. All things considered, at the time, I thought the planning staff came up with thoughtful stipulations then, and with the houses at 2,400 and 2,600 square feet and the other conditions. This request on the Lot 2, which is the one right next to me, would add 700 square feet to the 2,600 approved, which is an increase of 26.9%, which is about double the size I have and most of the other older houses in the area are, on a, about a third of an acre lot, whereas most of them are half an acre. Of the three newer houses along Milton Avenue, cited as reasoning for this, that the times have changed in, in the five years and that they're building bigger houses now, 207, 273 Milton Avenue would appear to be the closest match. It looks like it's conforming architecture and is 2,852 square feet, which is closer to the 2,600 already approved than the 3,300 being sought here, and it's on a bigger lot, 0.51 acres instead of a third of an acre. The middle sized one at 289 Milton Avenue is 3,575 square feet, but on .55 acres, which is two-thirds bigger than a one-third acre lot. If you scale it down to maintain the proportion of house size to lot size, then the 3,300 here would become 1,901 if scaled based on 273 Milton Avenue, or 2,210 if indexed to 289 Milton Avenue. I know that's not how these things are decided, but my point with this is that I don't think the 2015 conditions look so outdated in light of that. If you don't maintain the proportion, you have a larger house on a smaller lot that would appear and actually is more dense than anything we've yet seen in that area, including the new construction, because the newer houses are on bigger lots. It will also inevitably set the precedent for what happens with Lot 1. Whatever the council approves tonight, I'm 99% sure it is going to eventually also apply to Lot 1. The third and the largest of the homes cited, 299 Milton Avenue, is interesting because while it has a heated area of 3,827 square feet, it's on .63 acres, which is just shy of the size of both these lots that are next to me. If they took that and potted it down over both those lots, it would be very nice, I guess. Not going to happen, but on the driveway, as someone who's used a driveway going out to Milton Avenue for 24 years now, I'd just say be careful what you wish for. Traffic has increased greatly, and before the pandemic, from about 4:30 in the afternoon until 5:15 to 5:30, routinely it backed up going as far as my driveway and farther in the westbound direction at that stoplight. You also have some drivers in both directions choosing not to obey the 35 mile an hour speed limit, which cuts down on the time between when you see the car and when it's too dangerous to be able to pull out of there. There are also, there's also the downtown walkability code and concerns about that. I can say firsthand, I see a lot more pedestrians and people riding bikes on that sidewalk than I did 10 years or 20 years ago. And I don't want to hit any of them, but some, sometimes they can come along pretty fast. On the setback, the higher the structure and the further forward in the lot it is...
Sir? If you could, we're really only supposed to give you three minutes.
Oh, I'm, I'm almost done. I've got two paragraphs here. On the setback, the higher the structure and the further forward in the lot it is, the more of the sun that's going to block out in the morning. I know that's an MB kind of concern affecting me only, but I expect to see the morning sun around eight or nine in the morning with this, because it's right in the direction of that. In conclusion, I would urge very careful consideration of this, including the size, as it will set immediate precedence for the other lot and the area as a whole. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Those were the only two public comment cards, Ms. Cobb?
Yes, sir.
If there's anyone else here who would like to speak on this item, now's your chance to do so. Seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close public comment. Do you have a motion from council? Absolutely. Councilman Binder.
Michael? I don't know if you have the information available, but off the second comment resident, can you speak a little bit to, on that northeast side? The, the houses have been built up and the size and sized the lot and how they were able to be so much bigger than...
So the, specifically 27... Specifically 273, it's 289 and 299 Milton Avenue, I think, are the three properties. They range, all the, the three properties are about a half acre. This property, Lot 2, is .31 acres. So it's, it's a little bit smaller than those lots. Those three properties have sizes that range from, or 2,852 square feet up to the largest one, 3,827 square feet. Those three properties did not have, go through a rezoning process, so they did not have previous conditions of zoning tied to them. So there was no, uh, other than the R-15 zoning on those properties, there was no maximum size of the home that, that pertained to those properties.
So those are R-15?
They are, yes.
And he's now R-12?
Yeah. This will show you the zoning map, kind of the area. Those three properties, um, Councilman Binder, are a little bit off this map to the east, but the area continues to be predominantly R-15. And you'll notice this, so this property was just rezoned, the corner piece was rezoned R-12.
And if he asked to be R-15, like similar, what would be the differences in what he has currently versus...
So this property originally was R-15?
Correct.
Um, before they rezoned it in 2015. If it had just been R-15, they would not have been able to subdivide the property because they did not, they would not have been able to have two minimum 15,000 square foot lots.
Oh.
So, um, the other difference, um, between the R-12, while asking for rezoning, is you're opening yourself up to conditions of zoning. Um, so of course, that's when the conditions were placed on it. Um, the building coverage is going to be the same in R-12 that it is in R-15, so they can only cover, uh, up to 25% of the lot with the home footprint.
So he popped it down to R-12 to get the subdivision and wants to pop back up to R-15 to get the, the higher, the higher, uh, square footage?
The, the square footage would not have been, there would not have been a max square footage under the R-12 or R-15. R-15 and R-12 just require, I believe, a minimum square footage, which is 1,500 square feet.
Okay.
But when we're looking at these existing neighborhoods and we see all the time lots being redeveloped in our existing neighborhoods where there's no conditions of zoning there, and they build these lo, much larger homes. So you can go into some of these existing neighborhoods around the downtown, predominantly it'll be one and two-story homes, and then someone will be, build a, a three-story home next to it. And then the homes might be, you know, closer to 1,500 to 2,000 square feet, and then they're building a 3, 4, 5,000 square foot home. As long as they meet those minimum standards of lot coverage, of impervious surface, you can still go up in, in the size of the home. The reason why there's restrictions on the size of the home, because it was rezoned. That is the only reason that it was placed, the max size.
And I guess there was kind of working with neighbors previously to say, okay, if we put this kind of condition in on the size, that kind of related so that they could subdivide the lot?
Yeah. I don't remember the, all the discussion with, you know, we didn't have CZIM at that time, but of course there was, I believe there was some back and forth with some residents that commented on the rezoning back in 2015. But sure, you know, we were trying to, the whole reason, uh, that we were at, recommended the conditions, we wanted to protect the neighborhood.
Great. Thank you, sir.
Councilwoman Richard.
Before you get ready to head out, um, Michael, the, the, um, example that was shown concerning, I forget which Milton Avenue address it is, but with the, the two curb cuts that are for the one particular property, um, can you speak a little bit to what occurred there?
Yeah. So I did go back to that property because I was curious, uh, when the applicant pointed that out to us. I mean, the applicant is, is right, there are several curb cuts along this road that are a little bit closer together. Every lot gets a curb cut, so there are bound to be some lots that are going to be less than that 300-foot distance. Um, and that, uh, circular driveway was brought to our attention, uh, by the applicant. All I can say for that is I did go back to the ENG, the individual lot, the land of servants permit that was approved there. It was approved by someone that is no longer with the city, and it did not unfortunately go before our traffic engineer's eyes before that was approved. So that's the only thing that I can think of is how that one, uh, kind of slipped through the cracks.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mayor Proton Mitchell.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Woodman, the, I believe there's been studies done on the increased pedestrian traffic and also bike traffic on Milton Avenue, especially since the sidewalks have been put in. Is that correct?
Um, I, I'm sure our traffic engineer might be better to answer that question. I believe so, but I'm, I'm not 100%.
Mr. Or... Either one.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
Mr. Graves, if you don't mind. If you don't have an answer, please say it into the microphone.
I do have a state's person. He has public works, I mean, studies for pedestrian counts in the Milton Avenue area. We don't have any current studies on that.
Okay. Thank you.
We've certainly seen a lot more activity in the downtown since, uh, 2015. There's been a lot more, uh, development in the downtown, and I think that everyone has seen a lot more, um, many more folks out, out walking.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Any other questions for Mr. Woodman at this point?
Thank you, sir.
All right. If there's no other questions, I'll call for a motion. If the applicant would like to rebut, he's welcome to. He didn't ask for one, so I didn't grant one.
Sorry, y'all. It's been a while. Um, the one thing I was going to mention, and I, I kind of mentioned it down the, the way here, let's see if, can you flip that back for me again? Um, this, this lot that you, that's down the street from us is an R-15 lot, but back in, this, this was created, and this lot was created when this subdivision was put in. So this lot was not a separate lot. It was all, this was like two properties, it was like a house here and whatever. And if I go back, hold on. I need to put my glasses on. As you can see here, there's kind of like a, you know, a house here, and there's about a house back here, there's nothing here, and there's an existing house here. This is an R-15 lot that's under 12,000 feet. It's 11,700 square feet, and, uh, the, the, the permitted plans are over 27, over 2,700 square foot house that's going there. Um, and if I, give me just a second here, I think I've got it somewhere. Sorry, y'all. Hold on. Yeah, here it is. This is, uh, this is from that lot that's down the street. Um, and you can see here, it, I can send it to staff or whatever, but it's a point, like 11,700 square feet, and it's got 2,700, 2,800 square foot house going on it. So, you know, ours is 15, the smaller of the two lots is 15%. Ours are 15% larger than this one, and it's, this is a, a bigger house than we're allowed to put now. So they don't have any of the conditions that we do. But I understood what I signed up for, but also it was five years ago and things, you know, I think, I think a lot of change has happened and a lot of development, redevelopments happened in, you know, right there in the area.
So if there's no other questions from council, I'll call for a motion again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
Uh, I'll offer, excuse me, a motion to approve PH dash 20 dash 06, 380 Milton Avenue, change to previous conditions of zoning, subject to the following conditions. And my, um, I am accepting, um, supporting the conditions as read by Mr. Woodman with, uh, in addition to condition number six. Uh, condition number six currently reads both lots have access from a shared driveway off Nathan Circle, and I'm recommending the addition of corner lot number one, uh, 14 Nathan Circle shall grant a permanent access easement to Lot Two, 380 Milton Avenue, over the shared driveway. And that is the only change to my conditions. That is the end of my motion.
Do we have a second? We have a motion by Councilwoman Richard, second by Councilman Heights. Any discussion? Councilman Binder.
I'm, I'm respectful of people wanting to do with, with, with their properties. Um, we've seen a lot of these, I've seen more than a few of the, the subdivided, and I've, I've seen some of the storylines play out, uh, from the ones that I approved and then coming back in hearing. Um, I guess the point is, if you were to present what you did today to 2015, saying you want to do the two bigger houses, maybe it would have been a different outcome. I can't, I can't go back in time, I wasn't there. Um, so I, I, I can't be supportive of adding the two houses when, when you made an agreement under the first one. If you wanted to go back and reunify that lot and make one big house, you know, I'd be okay with you going back to, uh, and just taking out the original one, but, um, I just, that, that's, that's where I am. And so I just felt like I owe you some kind of explanation on there, but, um, the storyline of hearing, can I subdivide? And then they come back, well, I need to make it bigger, or the markets change, or I'm going to live there. And then a year later, they move out. Um, I'm, I'm just, I'm just not ready to go down that path again. So I appreciate what you all do, and, uh, uh, just can't be supportive at this time.
Any other discussion? Mayor Proton Mitchell.
Um, I, I was here at the time that this came forward, and a, as I recall, there were several members from the neighborhood who were concerned about larger houses being built there. And I assume that you wanted two lots because it was financially more advantageous to get the two lots instead of the one. But for me, because you asked for a condition of zoning, you can't go back and apply it to the, to the new condition as if you never got two lots and build... I'm all for infield development, and if they want to build a bigger house, then they can, based on our codes. But, um, you asked for this, and so I see no hardship reason to, to change it at this point. I think I would, still want to respect the neighbors that are around and their wishes and their desires, because I remember them like they were yesterday when they were up here. And, um, they went along with it, and the council went along with it to give you the two lots. So I, I'm inclined to abide by that.
Any other discussion? Well, I'll just say, since I was here five years ago as well, that, you know, I, I too gave you the benefit of the doubt back then and, um, to the chagrin of some of your neighbors, and, and so I'm sympathetic to the gentleman now that's simply asking the same people to enforce the conditions that we voted on and supported over his objections before. So I, I will support the motion for that reason primarily. If there's no other discussion, then I'll go ahead and call for a vote on the motion, and that is to approve PH dash 20 dash 06.
Just tell me how it's lost.
Oh. One more, and we won't have a majority.
Mine's not.
Okay. So this is the motion to approve PH dash 20 dash 06, Nathan Circle, 380 Milton Avenue, change previous conditions of zoning as recommended by staff and amended by Councilwoman Richards, verbiage that she added in the motion. Is everybody clear on what the motion is?
Once you push it, it says, "Abstain." We get it.
Yeah, I'm also...
Do you have a question, Kenny?
I'm pushing, James, I'm pushing no, and it's lighting up yet, so we may need to take your hand.
No.
I don't want to confirm.
We can, we can always face...
And the motion does pass for three.
It is. The, the, um, yes, lighting up, the, the...
Have we got that resolved now?
Six.
All right. And the motion does pass for three. So the next item up on the agenda in the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting is PH dash 20 dash 04 Unified Development Code text amendments, chickens. And this is to be presented by Kathy Cook and City Attorney Sam Thomas.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The next item before you, uh, regarding change in the UDC to allow chickens on one-acre lots. Staff has received several requests over the years requesting changes to the Unified Development Code to permit chickens on property other than in the AG zoning district. Uh, we did a lot of research about other jurisdictions and what they permit, which was included in your packet. We found that Roswell allows chickens on a little over 14,000 square foot lots. Milton, one acre, 12 chickens max. Johns Creek, it doesn't matter the size, it just has to have the 100-foot setback. And then we found Marietta, which is 15,000 square feet. And we also contacted the other code enforcement offices to see if they'd had any issues. We didn't find any issues. Um, so we're recommending approval of changing the UDC in order to allow chickens on one-acre minimum lots. And of course, that would be a maximum of six chickens, and there would be setback regulations, and they would be, um, subject to the Fulton County health regulations also. Uh, this did go to our planning commission, that was in June, June 4th. We didn't have anybody that spoke regarding, in favor or against it, and they did recommend unanimously to approve the change to the UDC. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have regarding the lots.
Councilman Binder.
Is it the code enforcement group that would enforce this?
It is.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and I should mention, too, we did, uh, that it's no roosters, maximum of six on one acre minimum.
Any other questions for Director Cook? Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Thomas, do you mind reading the ordinance?
James, get his steps in today. In ordinance to amend Article Two of the Unified Development Code of the City of Alpharetta, Georgia, to add regulations to allow backyard chickens as an accessory use in the AG agricultural residential, RE, residential estate, R, dwelling for sale residential, R-22 dwelling for sale residential, and R-15 dwelling for sale residential zoning districts, to repeal conflicting ordinance and for other purposes.
Thanks, sir. Ms. Cobb, do we have any public comment cards on the chicken ordinance?
We do not, sir.
But if there's anyone that would like to come forward and speak on the chicken ordinance to changes to the UDC, now's your chance to do so. Seeing no one, we will close public comment. Do we have a motion from council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I offer a, a motion to approve PH dash 20 dash 04 Unified Development Code text amendments, uh, backyard chicken changes, and the, um, ordinance is read by Mr. Sam Thomas.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Richard, a second by Councilman Binder. Any discussion on the backyard chicken ordinance? Seeing no one, we'll go ahead and call for a vote on the motion to approve PH dash 20 dash 04 Unified Development Code text amendments, backyard chickens, changes. All those in favor of the motion to approve, please vote yes, otherwise vote no. Councilmember Nat votes no, and the item does pass 6-1. Next item up on the agenda is PH dash 20 dash 03 Unified Development Code and Code of Ordinance is text amendments, flood pain, flood plane management, commercial car wash, recycling, private decentralized wastewater systems. Director Sasevich, you're on the floor, and Sam Thomas will be doing the reading.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, before, real quick, uh, this is basically some cleanup. FEMA has changed some of the, their mapping. Nothing changed in Alpharetta, make that clear. None of the flood plain changed in Alpharetta, but the date changed of the map that we use. So that's one, uh, reason. The other one deals with car washes. Um, the, the new ordinance requires that we follow the model ordinance, uh, from the state, requires car wash to recycle, minimal 50% of their water. It's not retroactive, this is for all new car washes that would be installed in the City of Alpharetta. And the last one dealt with, um, private, private decentralized wastewater systems. In other words, subdivisions on a septic system. We do not approve that, we just defer everything to Fulton County for that, but it has to show up in our UDC. Real basic, exciting stuff.
Thanks, sir. May not be exciting, but it is important, we must comply. Mr. Thomas, would you like to read those changes for us?
In ordinance to amend Article Three of the Uni, Unified Development Code and Articles Eight and Nine of the Code of the Ordinances of the City of Alpharetta, Georgia, to amend the flood, uh, flood insurance study date, add commercial car wash recycling requirements, add private... add private decentralized wastewater system regulations to repeal conflicting ordinances for other purposes.
Do we have any questions about the ordinances read by direct, or by City Attorney Thomas? Thanks, sir. Do we have any public comment cards on this item?
We do not, sir.
But if you would like to come forward and speak on the car wash, recycling, water compliance, changes to the UDC, now's your opportunity to do so. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
I will offer a motion, Mr. Mayor, to approve as read tonight.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Merkel, a second by Councilman Binder. That is to approve PH dash two zero dash four three Unified Development Code and Code of Ordinance text amendments, flood plane management, commercial car wash, recycling, private decentralized wastewater systems. All those in favor of the motion as read by Mr. Thomas, please vote yes, otherwise vote no. And it does pass unanimously. That'll bring us to the final portion of tonight's public hearing, last item on the public hearing agenda. And there will be no vote this evening. This is an opportunity for us to review what the current status of the budget is and to offer public comment. That is the public hearing on fiscal year 2021 budget and millage rate levy. Director Harris, you have the floor.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This evening is the second of three public hearings on the budget with the next scheduled, uh, June 22nd for the final and millage adoption and budget adoption. Again, it's just a public hearing tonight. There's no vote. There's no actual ordinances before you. It's just to hear from the public. I did want to mention the budget that's in your package that, that is based on the amendment and the motion and the approval of, at the last meeting to the budget. So I can briefly go over those changes or just...
If you don't mind, give the public that's here an update on what the status of the budget is.
The last meeting, there was amendments to the, um, to the general fund. It's in the packet as well. And we reduced the local office and sales tax revenue amount by 2.2 million from 15.7 million to 13.48 million. Um, that puts it down about 20%, uh, about 18% reduction from the 2020 budget and about a 25% reduction from what we projected this year to be, um, the way that it was pre-COVID, um, running it. Uh, we made net cuts to MNO of $400,000, um, by certain departments, the biggest being Parks and Rec, again, the details in the, in the budget, I mean, in the attachment. Um, we reduced salaries by, the salary overall personnel services line item by $970,000. Um, and then we, that ultimately all these changes led to a non-allocated reserve in the general fund to go from 4.1 million to 3.25 million. On the capital side, we added in the Stories project for 12,500, added in the flock license plate reader for 20,000, made cuts in various capital line items for 252,500, and we ultimately resulting in non-allocated capital, um, addition of 220,000. So we took that line item from 1,073,000 to 1,293,000.
Thanks, sir. Any questions for Director Harris at this time? Thanks, sir. I appreciate it. Ms. Cobb, do we have any public comment cards on this item?
I do have two public comment cards, sir. The first one is Edward Kajowski, 151 Arrowood.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. It's good to see you. It's also good to see you in good health. I was to speak in favor of the, um, I don't know if it was the, uh, the bonuses and whatnot for safety officials and first responders, because as I know, in my experience, I was able to work from home and I was able to, throughout the last few months, not worry particularly about what everyone else had to worry about, mainly having to worry about, um, different instructions being, uh, given by, um, officials, not, you know, federal officials on, you know, masks, no mask, distance, no, uh, what, what the problems were. And I know the first responders, they all had to go to work and they had to be out in the public every day. So I think that their, um, their heroism and just being able to show up to work every day is very, um, indicative of who we've hired to be that, to take those positions. And so I ask that you, um, give them the same priority that they've, uh, given us. So, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Ms. Cobb?
Jonathan Hickel, 101 John Christopher Drive.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Jonathan Hickel. I live at 101 John Christopher Drive. I'm also a police officer with the city and have been for the past 14 years. As a resident of the city since October of 1997, I've seen an explosion of growth and change through annexations of unincorporated Fulton County, expansion of Georgia 400, to Avalon, City Center, and all other future, future projects slated to come on. It's been a testament to the city's planning and zoning departments to create such a vibrant commercial, residential, and recreational areas for everyone to enjoy. Mayor Pro Tem Mitchell, I'm extremely grateful for your contribution and support to the Park's Recreation and Cultural Services Department as their programming in parks are superb. My disabled mother-in-law thoroughly enjoys the painting and pottery classes that are held at the senior center and the new arts center on Mayfield and Canton. I appreciate your efforts in capturing the city's residents' oral history to include in the city's history room. I hope you are successful in finding the budget funding for that project. Councilman Burnett, I was dismayed to hear your position regarding the Evergreen Compensation Study and the 3% merit raise during the May 26 council meeting workshop. I understand the financial impacts of COVID-19. I understand that hotel and motel taxes, alcohol revenues, and property type tax digests are forecasting lower. I understand that the national unemployment rate is higher than in years past. I also understand your concerns that the words bonus and government employee are rarely used together in a positive light. However, what I've come to realize in the last 23 years of living in Alpharetta is that, good, bad, or indifferent, the citizens of Alpharetta have been treated to and expect an exceptional level of service from all city departments, which is 100% the result of our fantastic employees. Our police department celebrates one of the lowest crime rates in the state with phenomenal communities engagement and their interaction. Our fire department is one of the best trained in the state and has an ISO rating of number one. Our 911 center is one of the most advanced in the country with text to 911 and next generation capabilities. Our parks, pools, cultural arts centers are so fantastic, we have agreements with our surrounding cities for their residents to come and use our facilities. Why is that? It's because they can't compete with us. When's the last time you hit a pothole in the city? Tell me where it is, and I guarantee there'll be a crew out the next day to patch it. Is there a traffic light out? A cherry picker is on the way within an hour to get the problem fixed. Why do so many businesses want to be in our city? Because community development works with them to bring their growth and help them flourish. Our finance department, well, they do a great job too. Uh, they've never missed a direct deposit, so I'm happy about that. But their crew and benefits and procurement also do great work, which I've had the privilege to work with. Our IT department has a lot of talented individuals that I have the privilege to work with on a daily basis, and I'm very fortunate to have that. What's the common denominator with all of this? What makes the machine work so well? It's not what, it's whom. And that's the employee, the City of Alpharetta employee. The City of Alpharetta employee that in the fourth quarter of FY 20, on the Monday before payday, you and impart with other council members and city hall administration rescinded the 3% merit increase. You put on hold the pay and compensation results that would have affected almost half the employee base in the city, 235 employees. Let's be clear, this study brought those employees' pay on par with their surrounding peers. Not only did you cut them off at the knees, you then knocked the wind out from their sails by taking away the merit increase. As a gesture of goodwill, Mayor Gilvin, you offered to do a one-time bonus, merit bonus, to help soften the blow. Mr. Mayor, thank you for your comments at the May 26 council workshop. Um, you have always been a champion for the employee, and as both a resident and an employee, you have my heartfelt thanks. Mr. Burnett, this morning you sent an email to all of Public Safety expressing your thanks and full support in light of these difficult and unprecedented times. In closing, you said, "Call me if you ever need anything." Well, sir, I'm calling on you now to fund the 3% merit raise that was due to employees of April 2020, funded the first pay period of the FY 21 budget July 1st, vote to keep the 3% merit raise due in April 2021, vote to enact the recommendations of the Evergreen Pay Study in the first pay period of FY 21. Now, I realize this will be a challenge due to the time constraints and work necessary to make it happen. But just as we, and not just Public Safety, but every employee of every department heats the call every day, I implore you to answer this call. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Even though we have no other public comment cards, I do see someone waving from the cheap seats back there. Please come forward. If you don't mind, I know it's been a few years, if you could just say your name and your address for the public record. For those of you that don't know, this is former councilman. He'll give you his name. And he was actually here five years ago when that other zoning case was heard.
I, I was here the, the zoning case. My name is DC Aiken, um, 425 Park Creek Way, Alpharetta, Georgia, 30022. And, um, it's good to be up here, guys. We're at a times that are trying times, but it's not times that this city has not faced economically. '07, '08, '09, 2011, 2012 was the worst economic situation this country had seen since the depression at that time. And yes, we lost revenue. Where did we lose revenue in 2007, '08, '09, '10? Is our properties dropped by 20 to 30% in value, and therefore we lost tax revenue. Did we panic? No. And you, these people up here are not going to panic. I, I think what you guys have done has been outstanding. Officer, I would like to say thank you for, where are you? Thank you for everything you've done for the city and our police department and fire. Um, you know, those budgets for police and fire are why people are here. What he said tonight is absolutely correct. That's why we are here, uh, that we live in this city. Where I can feel that, God forbid, I have an emergency, there's really good chance it's in four minutes, someone's going to be at my house. Um, and that's where I'm going with, when we say we want to make cuts, and keep in mind, yes, we're losing tax revenue because of the pandemic. But we ought to also look how much we lost in taxes from '07 to 2010. Very similar, probably. When we talk about cutting budgets, what we're talking about in this city is we're talking about cutting people. I mean, okay, so we're not going to do a couple potholes, or we're not going to repave a couple roads. That's not it. The big money would be people, and we can't afford that because let me tell you, the best part about this city is our employees. From someone who is involved with this city for 15 years, um, between planning commission and being on council, what I realize is the employees of this city is what makes us great. No question. Makes us absolutely great. And we did things when, I understand the gentleman back there just wants the merit increases. I get it. America's not getting merit increases. Matter of fact, most of America, 20% right now, don't have a job. And we were faced with that same thing in 2007, '08, and '09. And Mayor Gilvin is absolutely correct. What we said is, guys, we get it. We want to keep you employed. We want to keep your buddies employed. But we can't right now afford to give you a raise. But we will. We'll take care of you. And Jimmy's absolutely correct. We did. We came back with a one-time bonus, which pretty much did everything we could do. And I will also tell you this, just from an economic standpoint, we have no inflation. I get merit increases, but generally speaking, merit increases are, stay up with cost of living. Right now, we're zero. Matter of fact, you could actually argue that we're minus zero as far as inflation. But I'd strongly hope that we find a way not to cut the budgets where we end up losing employees, um, because we've got the best. And I trust you guys to do everything and do it right, because you guys have been doing it right. So, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward at this time and speak on the budget item? Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. As we mentioned earlier, there's no vote on that item tonight, so there will be a vote on that on the 22nd, next Monday. And that will conclude public hearing items for this evening. We've got some items coming up, an old business. So those of you that, uh, are not enamored with the discussion about skateboards, I believe we've got some people out there that are waiting to get into the facility. So you're certainly welcome to stay, but I know there's some people that would love their opportunity to come hear about the skateboard ordinance as well. So if you don't mind, we'll take a quick five-minute break. See you in a few. See you in a few. All right, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your patience in shifting the room as we adjust to the new world of social distancing. Appreciate your patience out there in the lobby, and we'll begin the old business portion of tonight's agenda. Item A is consideration of an ordinance providing for regulations governing use of skateboards within the skateboard restriction zone. This is the second reading. Generally, no comment allowed in the second meeting. Sponsored by Mayor Pro Tim Mitchell and Councilwoman Richard. Sam Thomas, I believe you were going to present and read the ordinance for those who may not be familiar with it.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. This is the second reading. There have been a couple of changes since the ordinance. Number one, the reference to the downtown core has been deleted, and the zone now is going to be entitled Skateboard Restriction Zone. And the map that you're looking there has the downtown core that was previously referred to in the ordinance as where skateboarding would not be permitted. There's a new map that's been added, and in the purple you can see, or what's left off, in the pink or salmon color, those of the downtown core area, they're no longer included. So what you see in the purple is what's included in the new map. The other changes were, in the first ordinance, or the first reading, there were a number of devices that were included, including roller skates and inline skates. They have been removed from prohibition, so it just refers to skateboards and longboards. And again, we've renamed the area, the shrunken area, to the Skateboard Restriction Zone. And then in addition to that, the other change was that there's an exception that any minor 12 years or older or younger may operate skateboards in the skateboard restriction zone, provided such minor is under the direct supervision of their parents, guardian, or other adult having custody or control of such minor. With that, the ordinance remains the same for second reading, and I'll read the title into the record and then answer any questions if you have. An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Alpharetta, Georgia, providing for regulations governing the use of skateboards to provide for an effective date and for other purposes. And again, we've deleted the similar devices, and it only applies to skateboards and longboards. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or provide any additional information that I can.
Any questions from council? Mayor Pro Tim Mitchell.
Sam, I'd just like to point out, the map is the parking garage that where it says Milton Avenue, you just removed it, so the public can't see it there. But right where it says Milton Avenue, the peach area should be purple, because the deck, that's the other downtown deck that would still be.
Yes, the other downtown deck is included. I'm not sure whether it's not showing up there, but you're correct. There is another map, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think this was just a really kind of a comparison of what we had before and what's there now. This is actually this way. I don't know if that will cover the whole thing. Yeah. Okay, so that is the actual map with more of the landmarks, and it does also show under this, it shows the actual parking decks as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions at this time from council? Councilwoman Richard.
Mr. Thomas, I also just want to mention, the red outline is reflective of the actual sidewalks where the skateboard and the longboards are not allowed to be used. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Right, okay, thank you.
And this map was prepared by Ben Kern, who you're all familiar with.
Yes, in community development.
At our direction.
Any other questions from council at this time? Thanks, sir. As I mentioned, there was public comment allowed in the first reading. We don't typically allow public comment on the second reading of an item like this. Is there any discussion or other questions from council?
I don't have a question, but I do have a discussion, if I could do that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have a motion?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion that we approve on the consideration of an ordinance providing for the regulations governing use of skateboards within the skateboard restriction zone.
Second.
We do have a motion, a second. You're welcome to make any comments. Councilwoman Richard.
My comment is, I want to thank my fellow council members, and I want to thank the public for all the feedback that we've received from the very first workshop that we had several weeks ago. This ordinance, I think, is a collaborative effort, and I believe that it is a good first step. I think that, I don't think anything is ever perfect when it comes out of the gate for the first time, so I'm hopeful that this will address the public safety issues that I have witnessed personally, that we have heard from a number of residents and business owners in the downtown area. Just to give a little bit more background as to how we've arrived at what we have here, there was a certain amount of research that we also did. We look at, in our Parks Master Plan, there are several cities that we benchmark against for various parks and trails that we look to emulate, and Greenville, South Carolina is one of them, Franklin, Tennessee is another, and Asheville, North Carolina. And all three of those cities, over the last number of years, have enacted similar ordinances in their high-density downtown core area. So I think that we've looked at, you know, cities that we like to emulate, we've taken in the feedback from a lot of the public comments, and also from my fellow council members, so I appreciate all of that help in crafting what we have before us today. Thank you.
Councilman Hypes.
From the beginning of this ordinance, I have, it's piqued my interest, and I've been vocal about it, and I want to echo Councilmember Richard's comments about how appreciative I am of all the input from the community, in a wide range in the community, from the business community, from local residents, from young people who were engaged in their own political process and their own futures. And so that part was very rewarding, just to get that sort of input in person and by email during the process. I also very much appreciate where we are versus where we started. If council will remember, it started as a total ban of skateboarding and other devices in the entire city of Alpharetta to a larger map in its previous iteration to a smaller map with fewer devices now. And I want to publicly and heartfelt compliment Councilmember Richard for listening to people and taking into account all the different viewpoints to craft what I think is a significantly better ordinance, while imperfect, but much, much better than where we were. And this is the kind of collaborative effort on something like skateboards that I think really equips our council as working together well. And as I've said on this matter, even if we don't all agree, we have been respectful of everybody's positions, and it's a vote where, even if it's not unanimous, it's not a divisive vote in my estimation because of the efforts by Councilmember Richard to hear what people were saying, such as inline skates and lace-up skates, and to reduce the map. And so while I find the size of the map still problematic, I do want to commend her very much. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yes, I'd like to.
Mayor Pro Tim Mitchell.
Go ahead, Dan.
Mayor Pro Tim Mitchell, I recognize you already.
Okay. All right. This has been, we have reached another point from when Councilmember Hypes first approached Sam, and it was a citywide ordinance, to what we reduced down to this size, and even after our last meeting, we reduced it even further to try and tackle just the higher-dense area. And so, but one good thing that's come out of this whole thing is it's got the Parks Department and speaking with younger skaters about a park, a skate park in one of our existing parks to include some features there. So hopefully, when the budget gets back to normal, we can pursue that and get input from a lot of other, a lot of skaters who have a desire to have something here. But it doesn't change the fact that we still need this ordinance. There are safety issues. If you'll look online at some of the pictures that are there, the reason, there's damage to brick, there's damage to railing, there's dangerous activity going on. There was skateboarding going down parking garages in blind spots, and we just can't take the liability as a city for that. And so that, and in addition to near misses in city center in our completely dense area, pedestrian-friendly area, it's time that we heard all of our citizens and institute this. And if it needs to be expanded later, this ordinance also includes, all we have to do is put up signs of no skateboarding in those areas, but hopefully, we won't have to do that. Hopefully, this is just a small area of the city at large, and the city at large, there's no skateboard ordinance whatsoever. So thank you for your input and help with this.
Councilman Merkel.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. I'm not going to go into great detail where I stand on this issue, because if you've been to the last two meetings, you probably know. If you don't, I'm happy to talk to you later. Anytime you get a situation like this where you don't appreciate the direction it's going in, I've always felt it's important to look for alternatives. Saying no, taking your ball and going home isn't going to get the things accomplished needed to get accomplished. So I pretty much know where this is going, and we have for a couple of weeks, it seemed like, and what Mr. Mitchell, or Mayor Pro Tim Mitchell just mentioned, when we came out of the last meeting, I kind of knew the writing was on the wall, so I chatted with Morgan with Parks and Rec for a minute and said, you know, y'all go back to your staff. This is what you guys do. And so they did, and he called me back three days later, I think, and he says, man, we got an idea, I want to talk to you about it. So he was able to include some folks in here that spoke at the last meeting to sit down, look at some different park facilities we have. If you were in here earlier talking about the budget, we don't have money to give raises. Well, we're not allocating money to give raises. It's going to be difficult for me to, you know, look into a couple hundred thousand dollars to design a skate park right now, or come up with the $2 million to build it right now. But Morgan Rogers, Director Rogers, has a plan. It's being implemented right now to offer an alternative in one of our parks until we can come up with a more permanent answer. I won't support this tonight. It's so overreaching in my mind, but you know what? As Councilman Hypes said, it's great that it's not a divisive issue. I've been up here for some of those, and at the end of the day, you know, it'll carry on the way it carries on. So thank you.
Any other comments from council? I'll just make a short, brief one. I acknowledge, I think this is a much better ordinance than what we originally discussed, where I was close to supporting because of the restrictions within parking decks and things like that. And I tell you, over the last few weeks, if you see where American society has gone and the divisiveness caused by the police force intervening in instances, and I've been very sensitive, and I mentioned it, I think, the first time, that when we pass these ordinances, it falls on our police force to enforce them. And so every time they have an interaction with a young person, they're the face that is telling them, no, you can't be here, you can't do this. And more than ever before, I'm very sensitive to that now, and I think that's why I won't support it. I think we had opportunities, we discussed maybe some improvements on the sidewalks, and now the potential of creating a magnet for those skaters, and I would have liked to have pursued that further before taking this step, because I think restricting freedoms of young people right now is something we really need to be sensitive to, because we're giving them the impression that the police force is just telling them no all the time, and I don't think that's healthy for our nation. But it is a much better bill, and I do appreciate the changes that have been made to it. However, I won't be able to support it in that light. So that being said, all those in favor of the motion to approve consideration of an ordinance providing for regulations governing use of skateboards within the skateboard restriction zone, please vote yes, otherwise vote no. And it does pass 4-3. So that'll wrap up our old business portion of tonight's meeting, and we'll move on to new business. First item on the new business agenda is safety addition at Rucker and Charlotte.
Mr. Mayor, if we could have just a second, we do have some folks waiting on this item we need to bring across.
Thank you. No, no, thank you for reminding me. You're welcome to stay, but there's others that want these seats, too. We do appreciate all of your patience as we observe social distancing within here and try to limit the number of people allowed in the council chambers. Now we have all of our council members seated, so we will go ahead and proceed. Thank you. Director Sucevich, you have the floor.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Council. Before you ask, Mayor Council, is a, we're requesting $125,000 not to exceed toward a C.W. Matthews for their construction of a curved timber with a steel backing guardrail. And a little history. And a little history, there was an incident in December of last year that occurred of a driver going around the roundabout, ended up below the embankment at the Seasons at Creekside home. Oh, thank you. With that, we received direction to pursue some options and some alternatives. We narrowed things down to basically two options. Two options. One was a guardrail and one was retaining wall. Through some due diligence with our engineering firm, AECom, who designed the roundabout, and with working with the design team, we narrowed that down to a proposal for just two alternatives to a guardrail. Reason being is the guardrail option compared to the retaining wall, the guardrail meets the safety concerns that was addressed. Two, it can be done more efficiently, more effectively, at a lower cost, and a more timely expenditure as well. The cost for the design of the retaining wall would be additional $20,000 to $30,000 plus another $300,000 anticipated and additional right-of-way required for the retaining wall. Our guardrail options, we have two, and just to put two out there so people can see. That is the linear approach. The linear approach shows a possible landscaping area between the sidewalk as well as the guardrail. And our designers looked at what would it take to improve some aesthetics, not do everything as an engineer. It's a straight line. As much as we love straight lines, we had some curvature to this. And this is basically modeling the backside of the sidewalk. So following that, which will then enable some landscaping to occur between the Seasons at Creekside subdivision property line and the back of the guardrail. So based off of recommendations from designers from a more aesthetics function, that's the reason why Public Works is recommending the curved guardrail over the linear. It is more expensive. We have some more posts to deal with due to the curvature, as well as we're navigating a somewhat confusing stormwater line there. Those are the big, black, heavy lines on the drawing right here. So we've got to be careful with the posts there. So things could move a little bit. They're not going to move closer to the sidewalk, because if you look on the drawing, the sidewalk and the guardrail are right there. They're right next to each other. The back of the sidewalk is the face of the guardrail. So we can move things over, adjust the radius, and work with that. We're also stopping the guardrail before it hits the large water vault, which is circled in blue right there. That vault puts it a little bit more challenging for us to extend the guardrail. It's also past the area of concern. The guardrail stops to the west, right at the property line of the Creekside subdivision, which is right here. So the not-to-exceed dollar amount, the goal for us is, for Public Works, is to have that dollar amount come in less than the 125 is so proposed, or for a linear approach, is preferred less than 105,000. We are taking consideration, construction of the guardrail post-installation of the sidewalk. So if the guardrail would be damaged or the sidewalk would be damaged during construction, we have funds available to do necessary grading, recompaction of the sidewalk, and reporting of the sidewalk. So if the sidewalk does get damaged, we'll have to demolish the sidewalk and report it. So that's where the difference in cost is. And so we estimated the whole entire linear frontage to be replaced, if so be, just so we have the funds available. But I don't imagine that we'll need all those funds, but it's more of a precautionary case. I'd rather ask for it right now than come back to you in a couple of months and say we need some more funds because we broke some side panels. There is a picture for the public to see of what we're talking about. And this right here is the steel at the back, and right there is the timber. And it's a weathered timber. We do not, just a natural one like a cedar will turn that grayish color. So we're not proposing to have it stained every two years or anything like that. We're just having go the natural color. That's what Public Works is proposing. Without any questions. And the timeframe, about six to eight weeks. So if one ever gets approved, I'll text C.W. Matthews tonight, tell him to get moving, and I'll go from there and figure out what we want to do.
Do we have any questions from council? Mayor Pro Tim Mitchell?
Thank you. Mr. Pete, also regarding the wall, helped me recall, there was a five-foot concrete barrier that had to go into the ground as well that could not be used as the sidewalk. But that was another problem with using the wall. Am I correct?
Yeah, the actual width of, so the wall will be back in here. We have a water line that we're trying to navigate. The gas line was not installed per the engineers' drawings, which actually helps us out, because the gas line was going to be in front of the water line. This is where now we get to put the guardrail. But the retaining wall would require a wider footing because of the conflicts with the water line.
Thank you.
And we would have to push that back onto the Creekside property. It would not fit within our current right-of-way.
Any other questions from council? Councilman Biner?
No, you said it before, and honest, but we got here because of a safety issue. And the neighborhood, they're in complete agreement that this option does provide them the safety that they were looking for.
There was discussion. At one point, they do prefer a more wall option. For Public Works' recommendation is the guardrail option.
But both were safe?
Both are safe.
One safer than the other?
The wall brings some different challenges with it. You don't go through a wall in a vehicle. So there's some additional safety there. It's where the guardrail will stop you, but not will not impede you.
Any other questions from council at this time? Thanks, sir. Ms. Cobb, do we happen to have any public comment cards on this item?
We do. Diana McFaul, 1185 Memories Drive.
Am I okay? Okay. I'm Diana McFaul, 1185 Memories Drive. I'm president of the Condo Owners Association at the Seasons at Creekside. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Although our community is divided about which barrier should be built, the wall versus the guardrail, and emotions have been high on both sides, the important thing that is our homeowners will not have to live in fear of another car landing in their bedroom or backyard. All options accomplish safety, therefore removing that fear. The Condo Owners Association has to represent all 27 homeowners of Seasons at Creekside, and the board has listened to all of them. We want to thank you for hearing our concerns in January and taking action. You immediately got us a temporary barrier in place to prevent another accident from landing in our backyards. That was huge. Thank you to Pete and James and all of the city employees involved in researching options and answering the endless questions from our community. That has gotten us to this point in finding a solution, and we thank you for that. We do realize that due to budget constraints and recommendation from Public Works that the guardrail is the city's choice, and our landscape architect does recommend the curved option. So we don't want to hold the vote any longer. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cobb, is there anyone else that submitted a public comment card?
Yes, sir. Michael Daley, 12130 Seasons Trace.
May I please the council? My name is Michael Daley. I'm an attorney. I've been asked to speak on behalf of seven owners of the nine who reside immediately adjacent to the corridor, also on behalf of the eighth, who is not an owner but is a current resident. And all of them are in strong support of the landscape guardrail option. We appreciate the comments that Ms. McFaul has made here tonight. It sounds very cooperative and congenial. And hopefully, that will begin to repair some of the feelings that have existed in the community. Because leading up to the decision of the board, there was a lot of frustration. Board had begun the process in a very positive way, had made it clear in at least three communications to residents of the community that they were interested in hearing their information, their preferences, their wishes with respect to the barrier selection. But unfortunately, the board did not hold a vote and did not assure that a quorum of those responding constituted the will of the community. And when the decision by the board was announced, they did not explain the reasons by which they had recommended to you, members of the council, the wall. And when asked to explain their decision by members of the community, both privately in a written letter and publicly in a public communication to members of the community, the board refused to explain the basis for their decision, other than simply to say that they had determined that it was in the best direction of the association. Nor did they disclose how many of the community residents had actually taken up their invitation to express their preferences, or what those persons responding actually had to say. In other words, they didn't tell us how many responded, and they didn't tell us what they had to say. So that led to a lot of frustration. And it also caused those who live immediately adjacent and who have been most impacted, people who've had their privacy intruded for the last two-plus years because the protective berm that they once enjoyed has now been destroyed, because the roaring noise of traffic, construction workers and machinery, and now the very impressive street lighting that the city has erected unfortunately causes glare into their unprotected sidelines, whereas that protective berm previously would have provided that protection. So they became very attenuated and interested to understand, well, what solution is actually going to address these problems? And very frankly, if you look at the relative cost, we've been advised by the city that the wall would cost at least $375,000. It would require a straight, linear wall in order to keep that relative cost down, which means you're taking more available territory of the frontage away for landscaping. And as was elicited from one of the questions posed here tonight about the wall, because there were challenges with the gas line, challenges with other utilities, a shallow but wider footing would be required, which would negate the ability to plant landscaping close to the wall, either in front or behind. The landscape guardrail does not provide those prohibitions. It can be seamlessly presented, and thankfully, the planning staff is recommending the more attractive curving option of the two. And this guardrail can be completely hidden by the hedge. In fact, if you go in the entryway drive at the Seasons at Creekside development today, there is a reinforced timber guardrail that is almost, you cannot see it, because the hedge that is in front disguises it so well.
Since you're not an applicant, we generally limit public comment to three minutes. So I've tried to give you tremendous leeway, but...
I understand. And I don't, I have other things that I could say, but I don't need to, I don't think. I thank you for your attention, and certainly those nine persons, those nine homes who are most affected appreciate your respectful consideration.
Thanks, sir. Do we have any more public comment cards?
Yes, sir. I have two more. Terry Snowden, 12030 Seasons Trace.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council, and Mr. Mayor. I want to thank you for allowing me just a few minutes to speak to you about this project. So my name is Terry Snowden. I live at 12070 Seasons Trace, and I'm directly adjacent to the Rucker Road corridor, most directly affected by this project. And we live closest to the roundabout on the Alpharetta side. So the building I live in is most impacted by the decision of the wall safety barrier solution compared to the timber rail, guardrail solution. So I must say that the project, from design to this point, over nearly three years, has been pretty exhausting for us, to say the least. So I'd like to begin with my concern about the wall solution and the negative impact that it would have to the residents, especially in our building closest to the roundabout. The wall solution proposed per the Public's Work Department, as stated, was straight rather than following the curvature of the sidewalk. So as a result... Can you see that? Is that showing up? If I could just quickly point out, because this is, this is a major point here. We're living this. This is my backyard.
I understand. I understand. We've put you through a lot. But I try to let everybody play by the same set of rules, and there's some people who have thrown some things up there that I would prefer not be displayed over the internet. But please, you've got two more minutes.
Okay. Is the presentation up? Can you see this? So our building sits right here in this area. So with the wall solution being straight, as the guardrail, the straight guardrail solution would be, you can see that this is basically the top of our berm. And with the wide, shallow footing of this wall, that further repeats, as has been stating, toward the Creekside community. Landscaping becomes a real difficult proposition on the backside. So what we would actually be looking at, standing in our backyard, is an unfinished concrete wall, and then landscaping to shelter us from the midnight sun of the new streetlights, you've got to have some very tall shrubbery in order to shield that. So that, in essence, with the retaining wall, what little that we've got coming down our backyard, our backyard's gone with just trying to put some hollies up there. So definitely, the curved guardrail solution is the best solution, because you can landscape on the front side of it. So you can hide that from the street view, also behind from the community side of the project, much more options as far as landscaping. And so the long-term impact of this, especially our building that sits right directly beneath this roundabout, would be, you know, much, much better solution. And I think with the cost difference that we're talking about, it's practically a no-brainer. So we'd certainly appreciate the consideration that the department has come back with the curved guardrail solution here, and we ask that you consider that as well. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Ms. Cobb, I believe you said there was one more?
Yes, sir. Chris Sears, 12130 Seasons Trace.
Hello. I'm actually, Chris Sears, I'm not a resident. I was actually a landscape architect retained by this group that are obviously in favor of the guardrail option. I think just a modified guardrail option, I would say, because they want to landscape not only behind the guardrail, but in front of the guardrail. So my apologies for not sharing in time this morning for council, but I think I've distributed an email and also have a couple of extra hard copies if it helps. And this certainly is not the only option. We wanted to be able to work with staff, if need be, to come up with the plan that would be a win-win scenario that I feel would not only be huge cost savings to the city, we've been talking about that a lot tonight, but be able to provide the safety, as already stated, by having the guardrail option, and allow for better privacy, better plant material, and overall, just a much more positive aesthetics to the neighborhood. So does anyone want to see a hard copy of this? Would it help in any way? What we did was modify just the area in the bubbles area. This was obviously taken from the plan.
They handed that to us. We've seen it up here at the dais earlier.
If there's any questions for me? Okay.
Thanks, sir. And if there's anyone else that would like to come forward on this item and hasn't yet submitted a public comment card, now's your chance to do that. Seeing no one come forward, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we please approve funds not to exceed $125,000 to C.W. Matthews contracting for the fabrication, delivery, and installation of the corrugated tin curved guardrail along the frontage of the Seasons at Creekside subdivision, and authorize the mayor to execute all necessary documents.
I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Mitchell and a second by Councilman Hypes. Any discussion?
I do.
Mayor Pro Tim Mitchell, I saw him first. I just happened to be looking that way.
I'd like to welcome all of you. You've now gone through training to run for council, so feel free anytime to register, because that's a process that all of us have gone through. If you've ever been in an HOA or a president of one, it's conflict resolution. And I want to thank all of you for... And I want to thank all of you for voicing your concerns to the city. And I hope you found that the council as a whole has heard what your needs and have tried to meet you where you are, and providing a safe alternative, but also an aesthetically pleasing one. I think this will give it to you. And like several of you said, you probably won't even see the guard rail once the landscaping is in place, but you'll certainly have the safety features. So to all of you, thank you, and best wishes as you move forward in your beautiful neighborhood.
Councilman Biner.
I want to thank you for the public input and hearing from all sides. The second resident in the comments, appreciate you giving it your perspective from your house, and definitely give it, give us some thoughts. This, originally when it came in, it's going to be one of the votes that are, one of the things I wish I pushed harder the first time around. And I'm glad it's getting resolved on there. And I'll always, you know, kind of wish I had had that. Hindsight's 2020. So I'm glad we're able to fix it now. I just, I want to say to you, Mrs. McFaul, Mrs. McCall, thank you so much. I've said it to multiple people, I would, I would never run for HOA president. And I think it was, it was here today why I wouldn't. It's, it's hard, especially when it's your residence, your neighbor, because you can't make everybody happy. And so I'm glad the way you conducted yourself, and I was disappointed in the first comment. Sometimes you just got to know when you won, man. But thank you. And I hope, I hope this is a good, good solution for everybody, and hopefully maybe have some barbecues together and resolve that. But I'm glad, I'm glad it's received some resolution, but thank you.
Councilman Hypes.
This may be, may be the one and only time I'll ever compliment the social app Next Door. But because of a Next Door app, this was brought to the city's attention. And it's Terry, correct?
Yes.
I just wanted to say thank you for taking the time to bring this to our attention. And I want to compliment city staff, and especially James Drinkard, for just, we heard earlier from, from the officer, the type of service the city employees give our residents, and the communication between James and the subdivision, which he copied us on, I just, I just thought it was outstanding. I hope you guys are happy with the results. Appreciate your input, and thank you. And thank you, Pete.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? I'd just say, sorry we didn't get it right the first time. I hope we got it right this time. Thank you for letting us know and guiding us through this. That being said, I'll call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor of the motion to approve the safety addition of Rucker and Charlotte as described by Director Sucevich, in an amount not to exceed $175,000 for the cur...
$125,000.
$125,000. See, I didn't have that in my notes. I was trying to wing it. I'm glad y'all set me straight. $125,000, up to $125,000 for the curved guard rail option. All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Otherwise, vote accordingly. And it does pass unanimously.
Thank you, Mayor Council.
Thank you, Pete. We appreciate all your work on this. Next item up on new business is Georgia 400 Express Lanes Construction MOU with GDOT.
All right. We'll go a little storytime here. As you're aware, GDOT's working on an express lane project from Sandy Springs up through McFarland Road. Oops, sorry. Thank you. Part of that project includes the replacement of the Kimble Bridge, road bridge over Georgia 400, the Webb Bridge, road bridge over Georgia 400, and Trade Wind, and a new bridge over Georgia 400 called Trade Winds, which will be the direct access and exit for the Georgia 400 Express Lanes. Through, working with Kimble Horn, and presented to Mayor Council, we're aesthetic exhibits for these three bridges. They are referred to commonly as Aunt Core Light, where we're trying to match the parapet, the color of it, the texture of it, the lighting, and the railing and the fencing going on the bridge. With this project, since it is a design, build, finance, maintain project, the first step is the Georgia Department of Transportation requests a memorandum of understanding, an MOU to be signed between the city and the, and GDOT. And the main point of that MOU is to, for the city and GDOT to understand what the cost is for those aesthetics. And Kimble Horn came up with a construction cost, and working with GDOT, this, these are the numbers that we, that have been agreed upon. It should be noted that the original cost came in around $6.5 million. We're looking at $4.84 million. So GDOT started the process at $6.5. We were at $3.7, if you recall. And so we started figuring what's going on, what's the difference? Did they estimate something different than we did? Quantity takeoff? Are unit prices different than theirs? Are soft costs? And all those good things. Tim Matthews has been great through this process, and he worked things through. He got our consultant, Kimble Horn, and their consultant, AECOM, to be on multiple MS team Zoom calls, and to figure these things out. At the end of the day, there's a 70, there was a $75,000 difference between the construction costs of all three bridges, from our numbers to GDOT's numbers. Why the 1.14 increase? For three things. First, they included, on all their projects, GDOT's including the soft costs in these areas, the general conditions, the final design, and the bonding insurance. It's about $175,000. They then did a 4% escalation figure for every year of the project. So it's a five-year project, 2022 to 2027. They allocate 4%. So that's a 20% increase. We allocate a 20% contingency. So right now, we're off by basically $175,000, a little more than $175,000. They then put in a 30% contingency. And that's where the delta of 1.14 comes from, is the one they, how they did their multipliers, there's a $1.14 million difference. So I apologize. I should have asked GDOT for all these little different segments, you know, what were the soft costs, or some additional costs, what was your percentages? Kimble Horn said the same thing. I wish we knew, we'd give that up front. We probably wouldn't be talking about this. But first time we have dealt with a design, build, finance, maintain project in the city of Alpharetta. First time Kimble Horn was as well, so those are oversight on our part. I don't think we're going to be doing another one of these probably with GDOT, but you never know what's going to happen down the line. So before you tonight is a request to execute an MOU with the Georgia Department of Transportation, $4.84 million. I will state that Kimble Bridge Road Bridge, the scope of work is from North Winds to the Georgia Power driveway. And then on Webb Bridge Road, it is from West Side Parkway to Morris Road. And Trade Winds is, we're just doing the, the bridge stuff there. The other aspects of the, the West Side tunnel, Morris Road is part of the GDOT project as well. So we will then, if executed an MOU, the next step is an IGA, intergovernmental agreement. At that point, we're talking about when does a check it cut, at what phases? Is there a preference by Mayor Council to have Webb Bridge Road done first, and then Kimble Bridge Road done for construction? They both will not be done at the same time. That verbiage will be in that agreement. Just more of the details, the scheduling, when would you want certain projects to occur, what year, based off of the projects that we have in the pipeline as well. So there's a lot of moving parts with that, and that'll come back in front in another, about another couple of months. I know it's a lot of information.
Any questions from council?
I do have aesthetics of the bridges that people want to see.
Councilman Merkel.
Mine's just more of a statement, I think, that given a choice, Kimble Bridge would like to take a break. So if, so if you decided a web to go first, I don't think you'd break anybody's heart over there.
I've got one question for you, Pete. So will the IGA include anything that discusses whether we can recover any of the contingency that's not used?
No, it's a flat lump sum project cost. So they will not know what the cost for Kimble Bridge Road is versus Webb Bridge Road versus Union Hill Road. It is a lump sum. This is where I...
I was afraid of that. I was just looking at that $1.1 million, thinking, well, you know, if we, if it doesn't go over, okay. Well, thank you for clarifying that. Any other questions from council? Thank you. I do appreciate all your work on this. Do we have any public comment cards on this item?
We do not, sir.
But if anybody wants to come forward and talk about MOU with Georgia Department of Transportation about the express lane bridges, now's your chance. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the MOU for construction associated with the Georgia 400 Express Lanes with the Georgia Department of Transportation, allocate no greater than $4.84 million for the costs associated with the bridge aesthetics, and authorize the mayor to execute all necessary documents.
Second. I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Mitchell, and a second by Councilman Burnett. That motion is to approve Georgia 400 Express Lanes Construction MOU with Georgia Department of Transportation in an amount up to $4.84 million. All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Otherwise, vote no. And it does pass unanimously.
Thank you, Mayor Council.
Thank you, Pete. I know it's been a long time coming, but it was well worth it to see the end result. Be glad to get IGA done on that one as well. And you have the next one, which also includes Georgia 400 Express Lanes. This one is the Utility Coordination MOU with Georgia Department of Transportation.
Yes. So piggybacking on top of what was just approved, this MOU is more for information for the design firms who are submitting a proposal to build this, and design and maintain the project of who is going to relocate our utilities. Are we going to relocate them? Are we going to design the relocation? Are we going to recommend a certain subcontractor relocate them? What we're proposing, and it's in the questionnaire, that's part of the processes, that the design build firm design the relocations of our utilities, which is primarily our traffic fiber, as well as our stormwater, and that the design, build, maintain contractor relocate them as well. So at the end, it's zero cost to the citizens of Alpharetta.
Thanks, sir. Any questions from council? Seeing none, we'll see if there's any public comment cards. Thanks, sir. Anyone want to come forward and speak on the MOU with the Georgia 400 Express Lanes Utility Coordination? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask the council to please award the Design, Build, Finance, Maintain DBFM Memorandum of Understanding with GDOT, and authorize the mayor to execute all necessary documents.
Second. I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Mitchell, and a second by Councilman Merkel. Any discussion? Pete, great job, man. Thanks, sir. And I like the price tag of zero.
Feel better.
So all those in favor of the motion to approve the Georgia 400 Express Lanes Utility Coordination MOU with Georgia Department of Transportation with the cost up to, but not to exceed zero, please vote yes. Otherwise, vote accordingly. It does pass unanimously. Next item is the final item on the new business portion of tonight's meeting, and that will be the Windward Parkway T-Splopped Improvements, ITB 20-016. Director Sucevich.
All right. This is the Windward Project, the T-Splopped version. It's, takes you from West Side Parkway to North Point Parkway with a long left turn lane on West Side Parkway, westbound to southbound North Point Parkway. Just to recap real quick, the North Point CID, in partnership with the city of Alpharetta and GDOT, are building the triple S from the ramp, from the exit ramp, North Point exit ramp, all the way to the Deerfield Parkway. All that is under the process right now, it's got about six months to go. And we decided to bid this project out as their project was wrapping up in the next couple of months, so that it would just be a carry-on through. We've got 10 bids that came in on the project. Sole construction, it was a little bid at $2,134,834.40, which was well below our initial budget of initial revised budget of $4 million. So very good work by all those involved, value-injury, everything as we possibly can. What the typical section is a continuation of the triple S project. So we are going to have six-foot-wide sidewalk, a bike lane associated in that area. The project will take about one year to complete. When we start, we'll be starting the next couple of months of mobilization, so we'll be wrapping things up. And that, no landscaping is specifically planned for this right now, but we will be adding landscape as future funds are so desired.
Thanks, sir. Do we have any questions, Mr. Sucevich, on this item? Thank you, Pete.
Thank you.
Ms. Cobb, do we have any public comment cards on this item?
We do not, sir.
But if you'd like to come forward and speak on the T-Splopped Improvements on Windward Parkway, now's your chance. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask the council to please award ITB 20-016 to Sole Construction LLC for the construction of the Windward Parkway T-Splopped Improvements Project in an amount not to exceed $2,134,834.40, and authorize the mayor to execute all necessary documents.
Second. Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Mitchell, and a second by Councilman Burnett. Motion is to approve the Windward T-Splopped Improvements, ITB 20-016, in an amount not to exceed, that was $2,134,834.40, I believe, if I wrote clearly. All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Otherwise, vote accordingly. And it does pass unanimously.
Thank you, Mayor Council.
Thank you. This is great progress, man, and we appreciate it. So that'll wrap up the new business portion of tonight's meeting, and we'll move on to our workshop, which is the North Point Opportunity Zone Application. Mr. Thomas, you have waited all night for this opportunity.
Patiently waiting. Thank you, Mayor. To share with you tonight's workshop item, which we've discussed before, a little bit earlier this year, about the opportunity to pursue an opportunity zone within the North Point Corridor. My goal for tonight's workshop, one, is to share with you all what an opportunity zone is. Second is to explain how we get there to the application. The third is to really gather your thoughts, gather your feedback and input on how to best proceed. If this is the route that we choose, choose to take, as far as getting an incentive for the North Point area, this area is certainly a major revitalization point, an effort of the city. And we already have one, which you all are probably familiar with, at the intersection of Windward and West Side Parkway. It's where Fiserv is, it's where Avanos is, and they are utilizing that incentive. It's been, it's been helpful for them in their operations, and we believe the same could be true for the North Point area. So, oh, there we go. A little bit about the opportunity zone. It's a, it's a tax credit that comes from the state, Georgia Department of Community Affairs, just shorting that by saying DCA. You hear that a lot. They ultimately approve of the opportunity zone designation. It is the highest tax credit provided from the state, with $3,500 per created job, with a minimum of wherever two jobs or more, net new jobs are created. And it is the largest, I mean, the lowest threshold of any jobs tax credit program in the state. This can be used against 100% of Georgia income, tax liability, and withholding tax. And I think what's very unique about the opportunity zone is a business of any nature can apply, which includes retail businesses. And a lot of that, of course, is... And a lot of that, of course, is concentrated in the North Point corridor. And so I think it makes a lot of sense for us to consider this for this particular, particular area. I want to share with you, too, that the state looks for four criteria as far as opportunity zone application acceptance. The first is what's called pervasive poverty, which means that the DCA looks at census block groups when they are evaluating opportunities on applications. And the particular number they look for is areas where there's 15% of pervasive poverty or greater, or if a block group is adjacent to a census block group that has 15% or greater pervasive poverty. So that's the first one. The second one is underdevelopment. Underdevelopment simply means areas with higher vacancy or where business licenses, building permits, development fees, or other measures of investment are lower than other parts of the city. We've already kind of done some research with that when we've evaluated the tax allocation district as well as the LCI studies. General distress is the third, and by, by that definition, it's other adverse conditions that, that also sort of augment the underdevelopment criteria they look for. So that includes higher, higher unemployment rates, higher incidence of crime or code enforcement actions, as well as abandoned, deteriorated, or dilapidated structures. The fourth of those criteria is blight, or what, what the state defines a slum area. And that is basically the predominance of buildings which by reason of dilapidation, deterioration, age, or overcrowding endangers life by fire or other causes, or a combination of such factors that are conducive to ill health, crime, safety, morals, and welfare. I've already kind of gone to this slide, but the one that had me the most nervous was really the one about the pervasive poverty. And, you know, many of you know, our, our median household income i- is a bit higher than, than other parts of the state. But again, as the criteria reads, the block group can be adjacent to a census block group where there's 15% pervasive poverty or greater. Looking at the, the map here, the beige area that's covered includes the North Point corridor, and that area is marked as adjacent to a census block group where there's 15% or greater poverty. I'm going to kind of toggle back and forth here for a second where you can see that the, the pink shows where there's 15% or above, and the green is actually part of the existing opportunity zone in the city of Roswell. So our North Point area is immediately adjacent to all of the, all of the, the criteria, again, that DCA is looking for to ensure that we, we're eligible for, for all four of the criteria they're looking for. And so that, that was very, when I found that out, that was very reassuring. It kind of let me know if we really want to apply, we've, we've got a chance to do so because we're adjacent to a block group where there is pervasive poverty. So a, a little bit about opportunity zones, and I've kind of shared this before, but the maximum job tax credit provided by the state, $3,500 per created job. If you look through the, the Georgia Department of Economic Development's sort of list of incentives, you can see that other, other job tax credits require a higher job creation threshold than the two available through the opportunity zone. There are others that only incentivize investment or job growth in a specific sector, such as research and development, such as telecommunications, such as health IT, such as film. This one, again, kind of blankets any of those, any of those specific economic sectors and even allows for retail, which is very unique. It allows for retail companies as well to take advantage, to take advantage of the job tax credit. Again, it's the lowest job creation threshold of any job tax credit in the state. There are others that are five in, in the State Department of Economic Development's toolkit. There are others that are as high as 1,800. So two, two is a pretty, pretty low threshold. It's the use of jobs tax credits against 100% of Georgia income tax liability and withholding tax. I think it's key to mention that the incentive does come from the state. It's not anything that we necessarily have to administer. There are some programs that, that do provide that, such as state enterprise zones. We aren't really pursuing that, but this does come from the DCA, so it's at their designation and discretion. And the last I'll mention again is it provides for businesses of any nature to qualify, not just defined business enterprise, which business enterprise, the state excludes things like childcare facilities. It excludes retail. Within this, you get all of those, plus corporate headquarters, plus telecommunications, plus any business you can name. All of them are, are able to qualify, again, with, within the, within the opportunity zone designation. So here are the steps to get there. The first thing you have to do is you must hold a, a public hearing prior to approving the urban redevelopment plan. So part of, of, part of applying for the opportunity zone means that in our instance, we can either create what's called an urban redevelopment plan, which is essentially an actionable plan put together and approved by the city by way of a resolution. A public hearing must also be held with the approval of that urban redevelopment plan. The urban redevelopment plan can truly blanket the area that we want to really pursue an opportunity zone for, and it really is just actionable steps that addresses our plans for redevelopment within that corridor. That's one thing that the state will want to see before we proceed any further. Put together the urban redevelopment plan, and I believe that a lot of the pieces that an urban redevelopment plan would require are, again, already put together, and that comes from things like our tax allocation district redevelopment plan that we've worked on previously. We can also pull information from the North Point LCI plan that we've also put together. So I think a lot of, a lot of the legwork's been done. All we have to do is kind of interpolate and make sure that a lot of the language matches kind of what the state would be looking for. The state does not have to approve of an urban redevelopment plan. That would have to be approved by you all, council, as the, the governing jurisdiction of this city. It would need to be part of our opportunity zone application, but the, but the DCA does not need to approve of that urban redevelopment plan. That's something we can carry out as a city. So once that urban redevelopment plan is approved, and I've, again, just kind of mentioned before, provides cities and counties the, the powers to rehabilitate, conserve, or redevelop blighted areas. The last thing, too, I'll mention about the urban redevelopment plan piece is it does open up other funding possibilities, such as community development block grant, CDBG funding. But a, a lot of communities, and I think we would kind of be looking for the same thing, is to really put it together to help, to help in our efforts towards an opportunity zone application. So we approve that. That, again, puts us on track to where we need to be to submit to the state for the, for the opportunity zone. Again, just more information about urban redevelopment plans. It can help address other city desires as well, public green spaces, vacant properties. We've, we've done, again, just some research on that, sidewalks, safer sidewalks and streets. A lot of this is familiar to us because we've been working on it over, over the past several years within the North Point area, attracting private investment, creatively funding public facilities and infrastructure, as well as reusing obsolete facilities. So we put together the urban redevelopment plan. The next steps would really be to apply for the opportunity zone designation itself, and all that would really include is a cover letter from the mayor. That would also need to include a, a letter from Sam saying the city has adhered to all of the, the various state guidelines and laws relative to, to urban redevelopment plans. And then from there, we, we actually would submit that to the commissioner of the Georgia Department of Community Affairs. And then from there, we, we really wait to hear back. One thing specifically we'd also need to look, look towards is if we so choose to pursue an opportunity zone in the North Point area, we also need to identify the specific parcels for that opportunity zone area. There was once a time when the DCA was approving large swaths of properties in cities for, for opportunity zones. Those days are long gone. They've shifted their ideology to approve more so smaller tracts of land, and I think the same, the same ideology would be applied to, to what we choose to do, again, with our opportunity zone application. So that's really kind of it in a, in a nutshell. I know I've kind of, kind of gone over, over it pretty, pretty quickly, but, I mean, that's essentially all there is to the actual opportunity zone process. Some of you may remember when we went through it with, again, our existing opportunity zone, and I think we've got, really, post pandemic, we've, we've got a real chance to, I think, put together a solid application, a solid urban redevelopment plan to the DCA that would help our cause, that would also help advance the goals of revitalizing the North Point corridor.
Have any questions, Councilwoman Richard?
Matthew, thank you for bringing this forward. I know that, I think we talked about this initially during our Zoom council meetings several months ago. So I appreciate you flushing it further, out further. My, I guess my biggest question is maybe more towards the mayor in regards to our TAD. And do we see this as, if we pursue this, it wouldn't, would it negatively impact what we're trying to move forward with in regards to the TAD?
Our impression at this point is if we pursue it, it will only strengthen the case for the TAD. If we decide to pursue it, then we'll have more in-depth conversations and things like that. But the idea is this would allow tax credits that make the case for the TAD being more effective, because one of the questions we face as we talk with Fulton County commissioners and things like that is if we're going to tie up this revenue stream, how do we know it's going to be successful? You know, in this environment and everything going on? So anything we can do.
To help.
To make the case that if we just put this infrastructure investments in place, we've got job tax credits that can help facilitate the redevelopment of that quarter. And I appreciate it. It's interesting. I, I dealt with the first one over there by the FiServ building, and, and when you talk about that and you wonder about us, but the fact is, we would be able to create jobs for those people that are just, I mean, I'm looking at those neighborhoods. There's a lot of people that live nearby that could almost walk to work if we could redevelop that whole corridor. So I, I think it really could achieve a transformation for both census blocks at this point.
Thank you.
Sorry. Council, well, Mayor Pro Tim Mitchell, Councilman Burnett, and then Councilman Binder.
Thank you, Matthew. Good job updating us on all of this. I, I remember the last time that we got FiServ on, we then wanted to pursue further down West Side Parkway. And Nathan Deal was governor, and I believe Ms. Gretchen was over community affairs, and they basically laughed at us afterwards and, and said that Alpharetta was not blighted enough. But have you spoken with anyone with community affairs?
I have, I have. In fact, spoke with our rep, Region Three, John Van Brunt, went over the map, kind of shared our plans with him. He, he said, yeah, you all meet all the criteria, you know, all four that they look for for, from an opportunity zone standpoint. And then even from an urban redevelopment plan standpoint, he also gave some key guidance. In fact, I think it's in the next week or so, when they're permitted to go back out into communities, he also plans on taking a, taking a trip here to, to further kind of get eyes on the North Point area and what we're looking for in particular. I'll also mention that, too, you know, in talking with, with Councilman Burnett as well as Councilman Merkel, we've hopped on the phone, we've exchanged emails with, with folks from the DCA as well. And again, it's the same narrative. We, we believe we've got a pretty strong case here, but, but we want your guidance and making sure that if we, if we do this thing and put it forward, you know, that it's something that DCA really will take seriously. And so far, the feedback's been encouraging.
Okay. Thank you. This is, it is encouraging, and if the state doesn't do something to help us redevelop this area, it will become much more blighted, and none of us want to see that. So I very much am in favor of you pursuing that further. Thank you.
Councilman Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Matthew, thank you for such a thoughtful presentation, and I think when the, the dust settles and everything eventually comes out of all that we have been up to, we will have literally thrown everything at this section of town. And I mean, there's nothing you have not tried to turn over. And I am very appreciative of the fact that it's a challenging piece of land, because when commercial development was going on in the city, it was really the first one to, to thrive, and it was retail space, and it's outdated. I think the fact that there's a $3,500 tax credit out there is really meaningful to any number of employers, be it retail, be it office, anything. And it's such a, it's a five mile stretch of land. You have got to figure with the things that this community has been able to do with the developers that have come through and the councils of years gone by, y'all just don't miss a lot. And I think that if you're going to ask somebody for $3,500, you might as well bet on a winner. And I think that we have spent the last two years meeting with people from the Georgia Department of Economic Development, meeting for the people from DCA, ideas that work, ideas that they told us wouldn't work. We at least have the rapport so that when we ask, we have, you, you have really given us a, a better than a puncher's chance to be successful, because if any two of the 20 things work out that we have sat here and worked on, this area of town is going to be really amazing. So thank you.
Councilman Binder, I haven't forgotten.
Thank you. I'd like to go back to what Mayor Pro Tim Mitchell asked. So before, in the past, it seemed like after we got our first opportunity zone approved, they put a little bit of a hold and everything. So the, the process right now, if we submit something and check all the boxes, are we approved, or is this kind of like a grant process that only a certain amount of tax credit dollars are available, so they're going to go over everybody else? What's, what's that selection process look like?
Yes, it's, it's almost more grant-like. The state, the state's going to look through all the different criteria. They're going to, they're going to look at a, you know, from a macro scale, all the different opportunity zones that are, that are out there as well. They're, they're going to examine the factors of, of demographics, everything we put forward. It's not, you know, unfortunately, this is one of those things where it's not a 100% guarantee that they will say yes. But, you know, I, I think, I think that the rapport we've built over time, they know that this is, is on our radar, and they know that Alpharetta is very actively looking to pursue an opportunity zone. But again, it's at the discretion of, of the Department of Community Affairs on, on whether or not they choose to designate it or not.
And what's the timeline on that decision, you think?
So I've worked on them before. I think the, I think they got back to us, it was about, I think it was a two to three month wait.
Okay.
Sometimes they go back and ask for additional information, which is, you know, not surprising. They'll, they may ask for supporting documentation. So that, that tends to happen as well before we get a, before we get a, an answer.
With all that being said, I, I do think we got to explore all options, and I know you're going to put our best foot forward on it. So definitely appreciate what you're doing, and like Councilmember Burnett said, just leaving no, no stone unturned, so good job.
Why not, right?
Councilman Merkel. It's a workshop.
Not getting home in time for dinner anyway, so let's just keep this rolling here. No. Thank you, Matthew. Yeah, we did, and Matthew and I got a call with the governor's office. And the reassuring thing is we didn't get a bunch of no's, or nobody started laughing on the phone. The concern is, again, if there is some maximum availability, and they say, well, hold on, let's look at all the malls in the state of Georgia. You know, there, there could be some competition, so we, we don't know. But it is very much like a grant. I mean, it's, you, you do all you can, there's no guarantee, and they don't always have to tell you why, if it doesn't work. But I'm fully in favor of pursuing this option. At the end of the day, they could give it to us, and you could say we don't want it. I mean, but let us go down that road and, and apply everything you can, as Councilman Binder said. Let's put our best foot forward and go for it. Thank you.
Councilman Hines?
I feel like I'm a little bit alone in my sentiments on this. While I certainly agree, let's pursue all options if we have opportunities available to pursue them.
to pursue them, I think how we message this is important to me. You recognize that we may or may not be successful on this, and it's fingernails on a chalkboard for me to hear that prime real estate along 400 in Alpharetta is blighted, a blighted area, that it is a slum, that it is a poverty area. And I understand those are tags that are affixed to define a criteria for this grant, but, you know, I believe we should explore all options, but that land will ultimately be too valuable to not be successful in the long run, and I just, how we message it and how we present it is important to me. And, again, it's, you know, if I'm an investor looking to move into somewhere, if the messaging, if the local newspapers are talking about council has identified this parkway as a blighted slum area, that would trouble me, because it will be successful one way or another. So I do appreciate all the options on the table. I kind of feel like I might be alone in my sensitivity to that, but I would certainly encourage some very thoughtful messaging. That's my two cents worth. And I'll just say, our previous mayor had a great deal of heartburn by signing some of the verbiage that was in there. But if you take the time and go back and look at what this program is created for, it's created to give incentives to employers for locating in these areas. And one of the, in the paragraph of different things that qualifies is obsolescence. And the fact is that one of the reasons they laughed at us after we were successful in bringing FISA serve here was because we had millions of square feet of Class A office space that was empty, and we got FISA serve here because of that incentive. And so it was successful there. When we've applied, we were coming out of the recession, there was not a lot going on here. Avalon didn't exist, and so it was a very different economy. By the time we went back and started talking about applying again, we had Avalon underway, FISA serve had relocated, some of the other major employers along that quarter. So I'll just share that one of the reasons it changed, what's changed now is Avalon happened and Halcyon has happened, and the giant seas of asphalt that are along North Point are functionally obsolescent. You know, there's still uses, and it's not on the upswing, it's on the decline, and we want to prevent that by bringing more jobs into that area. Because with retail in the world the way it is, what we've got to do is re-envision that whole corridor, bring major employers, bring different uses into that corridor to create that. So I think the case is there. I agree. We've got to make sure that people don't get blinded by some of the other stuff going on. But if you look at potential sites around this state where the jobs could be created to support people who are currently living in poverty, there's not many cities in this state that can create more jobs for those people than the city of Alpharetta if we're successful in re-envisioning that corridor. So I know we might have to swallow sometimes in the discussion, but I really think this corridor is critical for North Fulton and the state of Georgia, because in many ways, Alpharetta is kind of that gateway further north along Georgia 400. So I'm very supportive of it, at least pursuing it, you know? If we start getting doors slammed in our face or things like that, that's fine. I don't mind answering the questions about why we're applying, because I think it's good.
If I may.
Sure.
Again, to me, it is an issue of messaging. I have no heartburn with retail obsolescence. I have heartburn with slum and blight, and I do believe we can't
Then quit saying it.
Yes. Strike that.
Cheesy, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Well, and again, I don't agree with it.
No, I know, and I
But going back to, you know, I don't know that we can run the same playbook for this corridor that prior council ran for FISA serve. FISA serve, because of the, just the incredible amount of empty square footage in a building, they, you know, that worked really well for a company trying to relocate, looking for that much square footage under one roof, which was the intersection up there. This is a corridor, and I think we have the same, similar goals in mind, but I don't think we can run the same playbook. This is a different, unique situation.
I understand. Councilman Binder.
I don't think anybody, everybody's very protective here about the brand and protecting the image of Alpharetta and what we are. I think we should look at, if there's any questions about the verbiage on this one, it's very similar to the verbiage on the TAD. And I think it's beneficial to us to be realistic to ourselves and say, where are our opportunities for improvement? And some of them's because we've been very successful in other opportunities, other areas in our city, and it's time to do a refresh, and it's better to do it early before catching it before it's too late. So this is, this discussion of what's on the opportunity zone is not, is very similar to the requirements on the TAD. And sometimes you just got to look in the mirror and be honest with yourself, and say, this is what we could do to improve our city, and being honest earlier rather than later helps make sure that we can always strive to be, keep improving, keep being a better city. So it's going to help continue the momentum of improvement in the growth of Alpharetta, so.
Any other comments? Councilwoman Richard.
I would echo what Councilmember Binder said, and I hear what Councilmember Hypes is saying as well in regards to how we have to define the area. I think that we've been through that exercise when we approved the TAD a year ago, I think, December. Feels like it was a year ago. I'm not sure how long ago it was. It feels like it has. September, December, actually. But I think that we, as a council, and our staff, and I commend you, Michael, we need to look at every opportunity we can to aid and assist in the redevelopment of this particular corridor. I think Kathy's group has done a tremendous job with looking and working with the developers that have come forward. I'm hopeful that we'll be successful with the TAD being approved by the other groups that need to support that. But I think we need to look at every opportunity and be realistic about what we're dealing with, and, you know, COVID starting in March has exasperated what's happening in the retail sector. So thank you for flushing this out, and I'm hopeful that we can move forward with getting approval. Thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you, Matthew.
Thank you.
We appreciate all your work on that. So that'll wrap up the workshop for this evening. Now it's opportunity for public comment. If you've sat here for all this meeting and you haven't had your chance to speak in public, now's your chance. Seeing no one come forward? Well, there's only a couple of you, so, you know. We'll close public comment. Do we have any reports this evening? Councilwoman Richard.
I will follow on the heels of our North Point corridor discussion. I have some fabulous news. In September, actually, the 9th of September, Kathy Cook came forward with a workshop item on a grant that the ARC Transportation Improvement Fund grant. We were, she had identified two projects that fit the particular outline of the grant. One was for pedestrian improvements along North Point Parkway from Haynes Bridge to Mansell, and the second project was the infamous tunnel under Haynes Bridge Road to connect the Alpha Loop. So council supported it, asked her to move forward with applying for the grant, and we just learned today that we were approved for a $2 million grant from the ARC for the design of the pedestrian improvements along North Point Parkway from Mansell to Haynes Bridge. So it's fabulous news. Thank you.
That's awesome. Councilman Merkel.
I'm going to jump around the board a little bit, but I'll start with, since we're in the North Point corridor, I did have lunch at the new Buffalo Wild Wings today at their grand opening. So just as good as the other one, just a little cleaner, a little newer, and you knew every top brass was in town, because everybody in there, I got asked 12 times how things were going and if I have a good day, and I thought they were going to carry me out to my car at the end. So redevelopment is happening, some of those changes are in place. My wife and I were out Saturday walking Will's Park and saw the people lined up at the pool around noon. They started letting them in. That's a good sign, things are happening. Baseball's going on, there's a lot of practices going on Saturday, so as this city opens